All righty. Good evening, everyone. Time is now 7:03 PM. Today's date is October 20th, 2025, and we are here for our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first is our announcements and presentations. Item A1 is our introduction of our new library director, Jared Jacobone. So very much looking forward for the town as well as the Town Council, having the opportunity to meet our new library director. So if you wouldn't mind, Jared, please come forth and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be here.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you so much for the introduction. I'm very excited to be here. A little bit about myself, I'm originally from Rhode Island. I'm from Coventry, Rhode Island. If you recognize the last name Jacobone, my relatives own the Jacobone Garden Center in Johnston, so if you're aware of that, that might be, might be aware of that. I spent some time down in North Carolina, working as the county librarian for Turl, then Chawan County, for about seven years or so total. I came back up here, worked in Connecticut as a director for a little bit, and then the position opened up here in Narragansett, and I said, how can I resist coming back home to Rhode Island? So I'm very excited to be here, very excited to be working with everybody. I've met a little bit of everybody in, in the town departments, getting to know our patrons, getting to know our wonderful library staff, our wonderful library board, and really excited to be able to work with everybody, to bring more services and, more services and programs and books and resources to the people of not just Narragansett, by extension also Rhode Island. And a little bit of my personal interests, I'm a big history buff. I love studying history. I got my undergraduate in history and my masters in history as well, along with my masters of library science in, at URI. And I love reading science fiction, fantasy a little bit too. I like a little bit of everything, and don't feel afraid to come on by and talk about me with, talk with me about anything that you're interested in, and I'll try and connect you to the best resources, resources I can. So, but thank you so much for this wonderful introduction. Very, very excited to be here.
Thank, yep. No, I was just gonna say, let's give a quick round of applause, welcoming Jared. And I have to say, the committee did a tremendous job with bringing you into our community. Very excited to hear your interest to return, and very much look forward to working with you in collaboration to supporting our library, supporting the services of the library itself. And I would be very interested to hear about various activities, different speakers, ways in which we can continue to engage our community and bring people into the center of our town. So again, appreciate everything in your leadership, and I think Counselor Colonies was eager to give a compliment or ask a question.
Purely complimentary. So I work in adult education. I'm sure you know much about that. It's an incredible, rewarding job to be in. I'm excited that you're here. I'm a huge advocate for the library. I will be supporting you 100%. Just so you know, I'm on your side, and great to have you here. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you. I'm very excited to work with you, and if you guys have any questions or anything, you wanted to sit down, chat, chat about ideas and whatnot, don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'm, I'm all for working with the community and making things happen. So, but thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
I just have, it's funny, we have an agenda item tonight, what we're gonna do at the old library. So I don't know, if you want to hang around, if you have any suggestions and, you know.
Still learn the community. I, I'll stick around and whatnot. I'll provide what input I can, but you know, I've been only here for about two, little more than two weeks at this point, so I can't really, can't really speak too much to what's going on.
Probably a big ask, yeah, okay.
I would just like to welcome you also, and you have hard shoes to fill, but I believe we have a great library, and I so look forward to hearing all the new things and all the new ideas that you have to bring forth, and we look forward to working with you. Very excited to have you here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Well, if there's any other questions I can help with?
No question, but thank you for joining our community and best of luck in your new role.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Excellent, and let's give another round of applause for our new library director. And thank you so much for being here and for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, next item on the agenda is our Town Manager's Update. Jim?
Good evening, members of the council, folks who are here this evening and those who are watching from home. A few updates, you may have noticed over the weekend, the flooding on Boston Neck Road at Narragansett Avenue. The state is working on it. They're cleaning out the outfalls that must be cleared to Lake Canardge, and they're cleaning all the basins and jet spraying the pipes that are going down there, so that that should not happen that much again. The council has directed myself and staff to continue to negotiate with the University of Rhode Island regarding the agreement with the regional wastewater treatment facility. I did provide the council some information on Friday. The negotiation process is ongoing, and I expect to get something to you this week with the final recommendation. The Scarborough wastewater treatment facility, the odor has been significantly reduced, almost non, it was non-detectable today. The odor, the odor neutralizing cannons are still activated, which have been working quite well. We did receive some estimates for covering that was brought up last month, and we are waiting on another. Once I get all three of them, I have two of them now. Once I get all three, I'll submit them to the council. However, keep in mind that these rough estimates do not always take into consideration the design of the project, which would be required before we did anything. These are simply numbers for structures, over pots of the facility, both the headworks and the ditch. We would have to advertise an RFP for an engineering firm for a design of the facility so that it would serve its purpose, and it would not impact the processing at the plant. Additionally, we've been monitoring for the, the gas hydrogen sulfide with a, with a gas detector that we've been using. It was checked again today. It detects anywhere from zero to 100 pots per million, and it triggered zero at all locations, as it did when we did it last before that. And the estimates, some of the estimates for just the covering, again, this does not address the actual, you know, the engineering design of the facility, which would have to be done. The numbers vary from, from the ditch covering from 2.85 to 3.45 million. Steel, a steel structure, 1, 1, 1 million 650 to 2 million. The headworks for the building, anywhere from 265 to 325, because we figure contingency, and a steel structure would be 215 to 255 with contingency. Another estimate that we received from one of the vendors that had done the, Ray Pierce, who had done some of the work, had done the work for the facilities maintenance plan, came in with numbers of about 2,750 with a range up to 3,300,000 for the ditch, and for the headworks, a range from 330 to 495. That's without, you know, they don't have, they don't have the engineering study done yet, but that's where that stands, and I will keep you up to date. I'm waiting on one more estimate, and then we can, hopefully we'll have the facilities plan back from DEM, hopefully soon, and then we can move forward as complacency is fit. Thank you.
Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments?
Good idea.
There you go.
Hey Jim, so on the, the headworks part, you're waiting on the third, the third estimate, you know?
Correct.
Can you make sure that that actually is an enclosed structure with the air? You know, the...
Well, that's where the design would come in. I would, I would not tell the engineer how to do it. This is just for a structure itself, just to cover it.
Right. And I guess when I'm at, so they have these things called the fans with the cob, carbon fiber filters, I guess it is. Is it possible that somebody could just get an estimate on how much that would cost on that small building? So we have a, you know, an estimate of the total cost, basically?
We would have to issue an RFP for design, no matter what. These numbers are useless without a design prepared by an engineer skilled in the, in servicing, you know, building on wastewater treatment facilities. These are just rough estimates to give us an idea what this expenditure could be, because it's just the building itself.
Right.
And one of them was the building, solid building, the other one's a steel building, and for the headworks and for the ditch, and then I'm wait, like I said, I'm waiting on the third one.
Okay. Just, I just wanted to point out that there's a, I read in the journal, there's a couple of misleading numbers out there of $76 million for this temporary fix before, and I think it's being confused with what the engineer presented to us.
That sounds, that sounds like that could be the issue, yes, because a number like that has not come up with this.
Yeah, no, I just want to make that clear to the public, that the $76 million is not expected for this temporary fix.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I will just add that there were a couple events that happened, I think, of notoriety in this town that I just want to recognize and celebrate. One was the implementation of a peace poll, if you have not seen it, down by the Narragansett Towers. It was put into place by the Wakefield Rotary. It was presented to us by Counselor Vignali, and I just want to say thank you. I think it was a tremendous initiative that was brought to this council and to this community by you, and it reminds us of, and restores our great faith in initiative and desire to have everlasting peace, not only abroad, but most importantly, here at home. And we can start that by embracing that within our own community. Second, firefighters' ball had an honor of attending that. I think that was a really tremendous party, and it was a great way to celebrate the fantastic men and women who serve our community. And again, I just want to say, on behalf of the Narragansett Town Council and to the town of Narragansett, thank you for your year-round dedication and service to this town. And finally, the pumpkin festival hosted at the Kinney Bungalow and Sunset Farms had a great turnout. It was great to see families in our community come and celebrate, and I just want to say thank you to the Parks and Rec Department as well as the generosity of Sunset Farms. So with that, moving on, I just want to also speak, I know that there's a lot of words on the agenda, and I have to read all of those words. So, and this is the night that we're looking at all of our renewals of liquor licenses in town, but we do know that historically with this council, liquor license hearings have not been short. So I would like to know if there's anyone on the council who would move a motion to move the new business items up to just before the public hearing, so we can get those squared away and then dive into the public hearing. So the motion would be to move items E1, F1, and G1 to right before the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right. So now that we've got that squared away, on to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve as presented items B1, B2, B3, and B4?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to the open forum part of our evening. Has anyone signed up for open forum?
No.
No? Oh, that's a first. Anyone in the public here who wishes to speak for open forum, who did not sign up, but is here to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Yes. And as a reminder, all speakers may only speak on topics not on the meeting agenda, are limited to three minutes' time per speaker, and please be orderly and respectful. Good evening.
Yes. Thank you. John Hanley, Tenrol, and Strive. I will repeat my request from a couple of weeks ago, as we report on the sewer problems. We have two sewer facilities that smell dramatically. I would like to hear what we are doing about Westmoreland as well as Scarborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jim, would you like to comment to that at this time, or just follow up in the next meeting on that?
We have met with South Kingston, and Mr. Goodness and our superintendent will be meeting with them again and speaking with them tomorrow. They're having some issues with process as well, and we don't know definitively when that will resolve itself. But Mr. Hanley, I'd be glad to give you a call. Want to get some information? You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, so on to items, if you will follow me down to consent agenda. Item, items D1 and D2, is there a motion to approve as presented items D1 and D2?
Motion to receive and approve D1 and D2.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to new business from the Town Council is item E1. Is there a motion to publish a request for qualifications, RFQ, in professional periodicals to include online platforms such as Rhode Island Commercial, MLS LoopNet, CREXI, correct, M-O-O-D-Y-S, and inviting commercial real estate brokers, firms, marketing firms, and/or similar entities to submit a response identifying their qualifications to market with maximum exposure, a modified version of the previously issued Request for Proposal, RFP, entitled Requests for Proposals Investor-Developer Adaptive Reuse, 35 Kingston Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, 02882. The cost shall not exceed $3,000.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Discussion. So I believe this is an item that Counselor Durkin is sponsoring?
Yes.
So would you like to give a soundbite on this?
Who would? So everyone knows, maybe doesn't know, 35 Kingston Road is the old Morrie Luchin's library, and it's, it's been sitting there now for at least a couple of years vacant. We have, we have put out an RFP about a year ago, and we only had one person who actually took interest in it after review. It was decided by this council to deny that request. Since then, you know, we still have an empty building, and I feel that maybe one of the reasons that we didn't get more responses was because of the lack of getting the word out there. And so I feel like, you know, our own website and the, the state's system, I think most people go there to, to bid on projects and stuff like that. So maybe we could use a commercial real estate broker or a marketing firm and come up with a way of letting everyone know it's available. And this would, this would not, you know, this would just find proposals, and it would not necessarily mean we have to agree to anything. So the proposals could actually be from residents as well during that time. So I just thought we should get it out there, discuss it a little bit. We did have a, a meeting of the Economic Development Committee that we have appointed our, our own members to. I invited them to, to meet at the old library. We set up a meeting there that night, and, you know, I had to leave actually to go to the Narragansett High School thing, but the, the chairman of our committee is here. He can, he can speak a little bit to what this long agenda item me and Jim came up with, which we might need to amend. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think the question would be especially for the average individual who might be reading this and being like, what does all these words mean exactly? But it's my understanding that this is an opportunity to market the opportunity to come in and put in an RFP, or to take advantage of...
Yeah, see, this is an RFQ, which means Request for Qualifications.
Okay.
So we're trying to get, you know, we're trying to get, like it says, a real estate broker or a marketing firm to, to respond with a plan.
Right.
That's what this agenda item says.
Yep. So that, where this is not saying that we're, we want to bring in this firm to use the library. This is an opportunity to advertise and get the word out there better that we have this facility available, and we're seeking proposals.
Alex?
Yes?
The, the RFQ would be, the, the thought when Jim and I were talking about this was to get some, something that benefits economic development in the pier, with the hopes of finding a broker or a marketer that could secure a long-term lease for the property that would be beneficial to the community and to a, a business perhaps, or whatever other entity goes in there. And so we would be, the RFQs would simply have marketing and real estate people submit what they feel their qualifications are to market a long-term lease for this, a useful long-term lease for this that best benefits the community, and they can use the RFP as, the old RFP as, as a guide, which is very encompassing, and suggestions of what it could be. And we're hoping that we would get a commercial broker that would say, yeah, you know, I'm the guy. I can, I can do this for you. And then they submit their responses to the RFQ, and then we select one of the vendors to, to market it for long-term and for development. for long-term and for development.
Excellent.
Well said.
And thank you for bringing this to us. I would hate for this to go unused for quite some time. And I think it's very important that we get the message out there. And I appreciate you not only bringing this initiative to us, but also putting a cap on there, because I know how costs can change over time. And I think it's important that we've established a max on here. So thank you for doing that. Does anyone else on the council have any questions or comments on this? Before I, nope? Anyone from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute. Didn't you want to, do you want to say it? Or I already said enough? Okay, all right. So no one else wants to say anything? So, all right, I have to say something then, because the motion.
I just want to make sure that we're sound here, that.
Yeah. So.
We've moved the motion and went to a vote. Is he still able to speak? Not officially? Okay.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
So anyway, so the motion that's on the agenda, I just explained what's on the agenda. And so me and Jim went back and forth, and then we've gone back and forth after the agenda was established. And I think what I have to amend the agenda item does the same thing, but it makes a little bit more sense the way it's worded. Okay?
Oh, so you want to make a motion to amend your agenda?
My own agenda item. So if I can read it, is that the way to go?
Yeah.
Just to read it? Okay. So motion to advertise a request for qualification, RFQs, inviting commercial real estate broker firms, marketing firms, inter-summa entities to submit a response identifying their qualifications to market with maximum exposure to include Providence Journal, Boston Globe, et cetera, a long-term lease proposal for 35 Kingston Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, 02882, the former library, utilizing as a guide a previously issued request for proposals, the previous RFP, entitled Requests for Proposals, Investor-Developer Adaptive Reuse, 35 Kingston Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, 02882. And would I need to put in there not to exceed $3,000, Jim? Or, yeah? Not necessarily?
Not necessarily. It's just a motion to advertise it. We put that in the original one because of the type of international exposure they probably charge a lot more.
That's the motion.
I think the cost should be in there, though. And my, just from my own perspective, I think it's important to have that in there.
All right. Not to exceed $3,000, then.
Okay, thank you.
You'll chip in the rest if it's.
If it's more than that, we can revisit it, amend it. But I think it's important that we have that in there.
So that's the motion now, I guess we can.
And then I will move that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And then we vote on the amended version, and then we take a final vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor on the amended motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And now we need to take a final vote on the amended version.
Correct.
Do I have to reread this version?
No, I think it's in the record.
It's in the records.
And I have it for you too, Sarah.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve as written the revised amended motion to seek requests for qualifications?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to the Finance Department, F1. Is there a motion to approve the contract extension and use of the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement, MPA, for the purchase of liquid propane gas with quality propane at the price of the BPN Selkirk posting plus 0.246 per gallon for the period of September 2025 through September 30th, 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Council McNally. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to the Town Clerk. Item G1. Is there a motion to confirm the appointment of Larry Vronka as the Conservation Commission Tree Board Representative to the Coastal Access Improvement Committee for a term set to expire on March 1st, 2028?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those, oh, anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right. On to our public hearing. Okay. Here we go. So first item C1. Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing on November 17th, 2025, on an ordinance, an amendment of Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled zoning?
So moved.
Don't all jump at once. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we need to establish a time, or is that during our normal meeting? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, item C2. Is there a motion to open and hold a public hearing on the renewal of the alcoholic beverage licenses for the license period of December 1st, 2025 to November 30th, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So now we are in a public hearing. And as a friendly reminder to anyone and everyone present, that anyone who gets up can speak about any business that is on the agenda, and they are all listed. And not to spoil it for anyone, but it's just, it's every business in town that is, serves alcohol in some shape or form, is up for renewal and up for consideration. So anyone who gets up can speak on any one of the businesses that is listed and present here. So with that being said, do we have a speaker list, or do we just go to the masses? Oh. Okay. So with that, is there anyone who would like to speak first? I will, I know that it seems like there's representation from Boone Street and Boone Street Market here. So with that, I will allow Boone Street Market's representation to start, and then we can go back and forth.
Evening, Mr. President. Jack McGreen for Boone Street Market. And we're up for a liquor license renewal. But I thought perhaps before we put on our presentation that perhaps we hear from the public. And then I have a professional engineer here, along with the owner of Boone Street Market, that would be able to respond to some of their comments, because quite frankly, I'm not really sure what, if any, any objections or comments that are going to flow from the neighbors in the Boone Street area tonight. So I'd ask that I reserve my time to have my client come up here, along with my engineer, and respond to any of the concerns that the public may have.
So the request is for the representation from Boone Street, and whoever else wants to speak on behalf of Boone Street Market, speak first, and then you be allocated the time to respond afterwards?
Yes, Mr. President.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So with that being said, we'll start with the representation from Boone Street and Boone Street's surrounding area, or anyone that would like to speak on behalf of, or, you know, in regards to Boone Street Market. Again, I cannot prevent you from coming up and talking about any business in town. But with that being said, I will offer the courtesy to anyone who would like to start. Is there anyone who would like to get up first? And please state your name and address, and you'll be sworn in.
Mark Crook, 161 Boone Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island. I do. Mark, M-A-R-K, Crook, C-R-O-O-K. One year ago, residents in the neighborhood of Boone Street Market stood here and pleaded with the new town council to make changes to Boone Street Market liquor license to solve the Boone Street Market problems. Excessive noise, especially 10:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., parking problems caused by Boone Street Market patrons, and safety concerns. These problems, that did not exist before Boone Street Market opened, are responsible for a serious decline in the quality of life of the neighborhood. I will elaborate on the noise issue. Boone Street Market's busy season is about April 15th to October 15th. During the warmer weather, 250-plus people are outside screaming and yelling until 1:00 a.m. This noise penetrates into the neighborhood, especially from the south side patio. The combination of the number of people outside, outside speakers, and noise from inside that leaks out into the neighborhood at the late hours, again, about 10:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., makes a very unlivable situation. Add late-night alcohol consumption to that, and a whole neighborhood has been affected in an extremely negative way. Neighbors have provided verifiable data on the noise levels from Boone Street Market. A large collection of decibel readings from the Narragansett Police Department and citizens are available for your review. Also, numerous videos of activity and noise have been sent to the town manager, police chief, and town council members. This data documents the extent of the noise issue at Boone Street Market. The late-crowd patrons are different from the lunch and dinner hour patrons. The later it gets, the louder the crowd gets. This is most likely fueled by alcohol consumption. Lindsay Holmes has stood in front of the town council and made the statement that she is insulted when people call her beautiful restaurant a bar. This statement is yet another attempt to misdirect the council, proven by her manager's statement, quote, "We have worked very hard to get a sports bar reputation." Make no mistake, Boone Street Market is not just a family-friendly restaurant and a late-night stop for professionals after work as was sold to the planning board and town council. We now have a sports bar open seven days a week until 1:00 a.m., surrounded by residential properties. I'm going to move to the next issue, which is parking. The effect on parking in the area has been significant. Boone Street Market was given a parking variance based on the 129-person inside capacity, not the total inside and outside capacity of 414. The planning board had parking concerns at the inside 129-capacity, never mind at the 414. When the total capacity was determined to be 414, it should have been sent back to the planning board immediately. The result is little or no parking for Leroy E. Thompson Playground. And when the town sponsors sponsored events that draw spectators are held, the parking available is not enough to meet the need, causing frustration. Other restaurants have lost the limited parking for their patrons also. The increased traffic on Boone Street has also created safety concerns. People in the neighborhood have expressed their concerns about walking dogs or just walking on Boone Street and safely crossing the street from the playground or other businesses. The police records show accidents that have occurred on the corner of Boone and Congdon. A safety commission has identified the same area as a hotspot in Narragansett. This has also forced the town to make changes and add new safety features. I now ask Mr. Tierney, since he is the most knowledgeable about these changes, to inform you what they have been on the corner of Boone and Congdon area. Jim?
Well, you can do that now, or you can do it after Mr. Crook's testimony? Would that be okay if after your testimony?
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you.
So the restaurants in the pier that serve alcohol outside is limited. You have the Coast Guard House, Celeste, what we like to refer to as the Old Turtle Soup. And all of those places have had limitations put on their liquor license where they do not serve alcohol outside after 10:00 p.m. Boone Street Market, at this time, is the only establishment that the town council has allowed to serve alcohol till 12:45, or whatever last call is. This results in people in the neighborhood, patrons from Boone Street Market. They're parked on Boone Street. They're going to their cars. They're slamming doors. They're screaming and yelling. They're having F-U fights in the street. They are entering onto people's porches at their houses and also in people's yards. Not a very good situation. I had the opportunity at meetings that were approved by the town council, set up between neighborhood representatives, Mrs. Lindsay Holmes, her manager, and Mr. Tierney. And we discussed many issues relative to the operation of Boone Street Market. I asked her how she would personally feel if herself, her kids, her family members were woken up at 12:30, 1 o'clock, 1:30, and could not sleep in their own house under those circumstances. And her answer was very definitive. I wouldn't like it. So we have this situation that has now been going on for two summers. We have been speaking to the town council for over a year. There has been two additional hearings relative to their liquor license renewal. There has been three meetings, as I mentioned to you, between the neighborhood representatives and Boone Street Market ownership and Mr. Tierney, town manager. At this point, there has been nothing significant done by Boone Street Market to mitigate the noise complaints that have been going on since they opened. This is not a situation that is an inconvenience. This is far more than an inconvenience. And I'm going to give you my personal experience with it since I am to close proximity to Boone Street Market. And that is that we have had to move out of our master bedroom to the farthest room in the south of Boone Street Market. It still hasn't worked. We still hear subwoofers through our walls. We hear screaming and yelling from the south side patio. So the situation has not improved. So, the situation has not improved. And I have no idea what Mrs. Holmes' presentation is going to be this evening. I think it's a little unfair that they asked for the neighborhood representatives to go first, so that they could see exactly what it is our complaints were. Because we've been complaining about the same thing for almost two years. So, they certainly know what the issues are with their operation in the neighborhood. So now, there has been proposals that have been presented to you about sound absorption boards. That did not happen. There has been talk about putting a pergola up on the south side of the building over the patio, and the statement was made that upwards of $500,000 would be spent to build that structure, and that would be the solution for the neighbors. Now, there is no structure there. The town has given me, no information that I'm aware of, that there is everything in place to do that, if it's going to be done, when it would be done. There has been no public knowledge of the engineering involved in that, and whether it would solve this problem or not. So, I ask you to please do not take the tact, as has been done in the past, of all they need is a little bit more time. We've been through two summers, almost two years of this. If a pergola goes up, or any other solution, you can readdress it then. But right now, the situation is unlivable. Anybody that was in that neighborhood under these circumstances would agree with me. Now, I know that several town council members have made the effort to go there and see and experience for themselves what kind of noise and noise levels and disturbances take place. Now, obviously, if you go in there once or twice, you cannot get the same information as someone that is living with this seven days a week for a full year. But I appreciate the effort that you've made if you go in there, and I'm sure that it has given you some idea of what goes on. You have police records where we've had arrests for all sorts of variety of reasons. There has been accidents there. We have had a fatal accident, that even though Boone Street Market has not been deemed responsible, that the people involved in the accident were at that location a very short period of time before it happened. You know, I always wondered, why did this happen, and how could it happen? And I know you are not the town council that was involved at the time. And I have researched this for over a year, and finally have some idea, I believe, as to why and how Boone Street Market got all of the variances and licenses that they need for the current operation. And I'm going to give you some examples here. And this is from the December 13th, 2003, planning meeting.
Excuse me, you said 2003?
2003.
Okay, thank you.
2003, December 13th, 2003.
2023.
I'm sorry, 2023.
Oh, thank you.
That would make more sense. Right, so these are just some of the statements that Mrs. Holmes makes. And we've said this before. She's a very good public speaker and very convincing in her presentations. But if you look back on the planning meeting and the town council meeting, not this town council, there are a lot of variables there and statements that are made that do not agree with the current operation that is operating there right now. And, you know, some of this is she talks to the planning committee about the bar where the windows open to Boone Street, that there would only be eight seats at that bar, and that that was not going to be a high-traffic area. The anticipation wasn't going to be a high-traffic area. Right now, there's a fire pit with 10 seats, there's four four-person tables, there's 10 seats at the bar, and because that is a service bar to the outside crowd, and because the most space for patrons is in the outside, then they tend to crowd into that area. So, it is not at all a space where it's not used that much, or there's not that much traffic there, or people don't congregate there. She states, when she's talking to the planning committee, about her sound level measuring system, and explains that, that many establishments take a reactive position to sound problems, and that what she's going to do with this system is take a proactive stance to this. And she says that, you know, all of the sound levels will be monitored because she is going to make an effort to be kind and courteous to the neighbors. That's not our experience at all. She also says that, you know, she would like, when she goes out with a friend to talk, that she likes an area that she can go to if there's music being played or live music, that there's an area that she can go to so she can talk easily to whoever she's with, and that the front of the building facing Boone Street would be that type of area, where there would be, where there wouldn't be much noise, and it would be a great place for people to just congregate and be able to have an easy conversation. That's not the way it is at night. I don't know, if you go there at 1:30 in the afternoon, that may be true, but that is not how it is at night. There is many inconsistencies. You don't have to believe me, it's on YouTube, just go look it up and watch it for yourself. What has been proposed at that time, and the statements made, border on fraudulent, because that is not what we ended up with. Now, I have spoken to previous town council members that were responsible for this, and I can't tell you it was all five, but there are members there that substantiated what I am saying, that they certainly didn't understand that this was going to be a sports bar at night, open until 1:00 a.m., seven days a week, with this kind of activity. I've taken up a lot of time, I want to let other people speak, but in conclusion, again, the neighborhood, as a representative, is pleading with this town council to take action. The action is, close down, at a minimum, close down the south side patio at 10:00 p.m. Ask yourself, is it reasonable that neighbors have to move out of their bedroom? Is it reasonable that we have to call the police every other night? You know, the police calls have dwindled drastically because people are tired of calling. They haven't gotten any result. And the police department says they have no power to do anything about noise problems, that it is the town council is the only one that has the authority and the ability to solve this noise issue for the neighbors. I have spoken to the chief of police many times, I've spoken to the town manager many times, I've spoken to the town solicitor, and it all gets pointed back to you five people have the ability, and hopefully, the will, to solve this issue so that we can get some kind of quality life back that we were accustomed to. Ask yourself, is it reasonable that one business affects a neighborhood like this so negatively that it changes the lives of the people living there? Is the fact that that is commercial property a reason enough to let this go on and, again, affect the quality of neighbors' lives to this extent that we are up here pleading with you to do something so we don't have to endure this day after day? I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Tierney. I forgot that Mr. Crook did ask a couple of questions, and...
He asked what safety changes were done at that intersection. I can tell you, we did, for a period of time, we had the illuminated speed monitoring device, it was more of a public awareness thing for folks to see it. We conducted a speed survey, which indicated that the speeds of the vehicles were traveling, on average, just under the speed limit. We did increase the intensity of the brightness of the streetlights along that area, curb paintings. We removed a parking spot, which was located on Boone directly across the street from Congdon, because when people would, if people were parked there, people could not turn to head southbound without going head-on to another vehicle. So, we removed that parking spot. We increased the fluorescent crosswalk signage, both north and the southerly directions. The Boone Street Road Survey Assessment was completed, we received grant money for that, and we post an officer in the vicinity usually at closing. Those are the safety issues that came up with that, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, I'll start on this side, and I'll work my way over.
Yes, it will. Yes, David, D-A-V-I-D, Byrd, B-Y-R-D. Address or anything? No address. I feel it's important to give the addresses at something like this, because this is a residence issue, and it just seems important, and I hope that everyone would do that.
Yes, thank you.
I too am upset. Last meeting, Ms. Holmes went first, we spoke, and then went last. We don't get a chance to rebut what was said. It seems unfair, there's either a structure here, or there isn't a structure. And so, we're doing this, we'll certainly move forward, but it doesn't feel terribly fair, and there are some aspects of this which are exacerbated by our feelings if things aren't fair. Having said that, I'll proceed. I do have a couple of documents I'd like to put into the record, so when we get to that point, I'd like to move over. I have enough on one of them for you, because I've not shared it with you. The other would like just to be in the record, as it will, if that's all right.
Excuse me, Mr. Byrd, could you speak into the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
You know, Mr. Tierney told me to speak into the microphone. And I said I would, but obviously, it didn't take. I'm sorry. All right, here we go. I'm going to give a general summary, and I'll read part of this, and then probably get away from the reading as best I can. General summary, 18 resident property owners near Boone Street Market have raised serious concerns about Boone Street Market's deviation from its original business model and its impact on the surrounding neighborhood. We are not looking for Boone Street Market to be closed. What we are looking for is better operation of the business, one that is consistent with the original intent expressed by the owners when making presentations to the planning board, zoning, and town council, and during each licensing process, of course. We are not rejecting the concept of a family-friendly restaurant. We understand why people support an indoor-outdoor, quick-service restaurant that embraces families and pets. We don't even generally have a problem with that aspect of Boone Street Market. Anyone who believes that we are requesting the town council to close Boone Street Market has not been misinformed or has not reviewed our petition or statements at hearings regarding Boone Street Market. However, we do find problematic is that Boone Street Market originally proposed it would be a place for families and children in our elementary and middle schools. College students, because to the planning board, they bring resource, and restaurants have to face that, moving away from that comment in zoning and at the town council meeting later on. But, much like other restaurants, as Mark mentioned, they close at 9:00, 10:00. Some have a little bit of leeway, they could stay open, but they don't. And they can't be outside, and they can't scream into the street, and that's the issue in part, the screaming into the street. The 200 occupancy is, it's hard to believe. Mr. Green, at the start of his testimony at the planning meeting, said 229 inside and outside, inside and outside. He mentioned they needed 26 seats. Well, in actuality, they had 11 seats, they needed 30 to get to 41, they needed the planning committee to approve 15 seats that they did not put their fence that they built at the proper place to give a buffer for their neighbors. And what happened after planning? No mention in the meeting of 414, or whatever the number is. Zoning, no mention. Town council meeting, no mention. Town councils in March of that year, 4424, a document puts down 419 in some spaces. We ask, how did that happen? Who approved that? If you take that 400 number, four people for each car, 70 or 80 cars were added when they only had 11 spaces to begin with. That is a major contributing factor to the mess we find ourselves in today. Someone approved that, in our opinion. It should have gone back to planning, it should have gone back to zoning, and it should have gone back to, and we should have been informed. Numerous times in this process, someone would stand up and say, "Have you informed the neighbors?" Well, you know, you see 129, you see Boone Street Market, you think food, you don't think outdoor nightclub. There were opportunities, say, "Let's hold on a second and make sure." We're a little upset that none of our reps at that time... We're a little upset that none of our reps at that time, none of the people on any of the boards said, whoa, I got some questions. Given the benefit of the doubt, what was said was not what we got either. And so, I'm not sure, to be honest, if I heard it and heard the statements, I would have thought, well, that's awful late, really outside. But anyway, where we are, where we are. And so, the issue is that material misrepresentation. My colleagues wrote briefly about that, but I wanted to bring you for your records Title III Alcohol and Beverages from Mr. David O'Dwyer.
If you want to just give them the Counselor Tori Alde, he can pass them down. Thank you.
What I've passed out has a number of different stipulations. I won't read them all. But number three is any fraudulent act or material misrepresentation made by an applicant for a license or a license including but not limited to any misrepresentation of information upon which the licensing board reasonably relies in rendering any decision concerning a license or LICE or establishment is a breach. Now, there's two ways to look at this. A misrepresentation, as I understand it, can be. At the time I said it, I kind of thought that would be how it is. But then when I got into it and I decided I want something else versus I knew what I was doing and I wasn't being honest or truthful about it. It doesn't matter. It shouldn't matter to you what you perceive. You don't change the operating. You should come back and ask for a new license and start the process all over again. And this Boone Street Market is not a representation of what we were told. It was not a representation of what was approved. And this calls for, and we do occasionally look to the state to say, hey, you have a good idea on this, maybe we should add that to our ordinances within this town as well. Basically, kind of what we're talking about is things like, and I've got some videos to show you to represent this, but, you know, an operational switch from a meal conversation and drink at a late-night venue with conversation to, as we mentioned, a night venue sports bar with gambling specials, lose the bet and get a beer from online Jake. Parlay, two wins on a Sunday at the 4 o'clock game or the 8 o'clock game, get half off your tab. I think to tell you through gaming with alcohol as the reward is illegal in Rhode Island. This sounds pretty close to it. No one mentioned it would be a gambling venue. Marketing says, though, you get people gambling at the game they're watching on TV, they'll stay a little while. And they may have, as Mr. Jennings said at the planning meeting, instead of having a meal with a drink, may have four or five. There are 26 speakers and I believe 12 TVs. I would be willing to be corrected on that, but that's a lot of TVs. During the planning board meeting, Mr. Jennings, again, being the chair, often asks the first question. And he said, well, you know, well, how many speakers are you going to have outside? And I believe that, I was never sure after listening to it whether it was four or five because as you're speaking, somebody goes, well, one here, and let me think, well, did you say two or... So it's four or five. There are six inside and six outside now. And again, please feel free to check. We just had two put in the front that face out into the street. It was a park for children. We've got TVs blaring into the park. And to tell you, it just looks like a bar all the time. There were questions about that in the planning and the zoning, that, you know, really? Three and a half feet? You're going to put a bar? I believe that Mr. Duke also raised those points and brought them to each of the committees. I'd like to read a couple of the comments. I won't be redundant with Mark, at least I'll try not to be. This is the planning meeting at the same date in December 13th. Mr. Fleming, but the music intended to entertain everyone sitting in that entire outside area all the way from Boone Street from the back, right? Holmes, hmm, I don't know how realistic that is. I think one of the things we like about the approach, my wife is a musician and I'm a huge music fan, is that there's nothing worse than trying to go out with a couple of friends and catch up on when you have unexpectedly loud music. We like the idea that for those who want to enjoy the music, you can choose seats from over here. I don't think it's realistic that patrons down on the Boone Street site would be enjoying that music. I think the opposite is more likely. That side would be more of a reprieve from the music if you would. No. From the first day it opened, that has been a center of activity. It was supposed to be an area that was kept, kind of a staging area maybe, eight seats, take them away in the winter, but you put the propane in. So, it doesn't get taken away in the winter. Second statement. Mr. Fleming again. So that's music for the outside, correct? And the stage would be where the person would be from indoor music, this one right here. Some movement away from answering the question. You can certainly take a look at it. I believe I've sent this document to you. Certainly do. I put a few dots there to say there was something said before this, but it wasn't about directly the issue here. But this is the answer. We have residential gifts above this train station that we have responsibly to as well, so making sure that they are being kind and courteous to our neighbors and giving my management staff all the tools that are now available in this tech age is important. We can not only monitor sound, we can track sound. If we're seeing some kind of trend that every certain night at a time we're noticing an increase in sound, we consider closing the section or adding additional staff out there to mitigate that. Staff beyond five, security people, staff beyond five officers occasionally outside, it doesn't mitigate the sound. It doesn't mitigate the yelling. I'll get into in a second what would have mitigated it, what can mitigate, can be in Ms. Holmes' best interest and ours to move beyond the stalemate of its loud. And the town has done almost nothing with the exception of stopping music in the evening, which helped. I'd like to move on to the videos now, and I'd like to represent what each video is. These were taken by an amateur and they sometimes aren't terribly clear. However, it's one of the reasons I mentioned it. The first one is from south, Boone Street, crowd size, waiting line, you know, and then this, per eight seats are supposed to be out there at Pass. So if we can play that, please.
Do you have a date that this was taken?
Sure. 9/26/24. At... Well, I can get it for you. I have it for the others and I have it as well. But it's after 10:00.
Did you say 20/24? 20/24?
Yes, 20/24, I'm sorry. What I'm going to do is what I did with Dan previously. Put on my sound meter, 65. We'll make sure it's 65, which this one may have been. Dan and I checked this out this week because we had the fiasco last time where it wouldn't play. So I'm hopeful that... That's the wrong, I think that's... Is it? I don't think it's, I don't think it's one, Dan. One is the long line of hundreds of people.
It's one, you just said one. Is that number one?
Does it? My mistake. Then we can play this one. It's a... The next one is actually for, it's live music at 10:45, 7:5, 20/25. Music continues outside two hours after the animated closing for this. No citation for the noise or outside music after 9:00. The rationale when I asked about this, and I think you got back to me, President Mendez, was that the band was inside. I don't think it was your intention to say, hey, the band can be inside and you can play the music outside. I think it was time to say, ah, excuse me, that doesn't cut it. So that's what this one coming up is.
Excuse me. What time at night was that?
What time? That was at 10:45 on 7:5, 20/25.
Thank you.
It went on to 10:00, which is the two hours past. The next one is loud bar music, and this is music which in fact doesn't have lyrics. It's called drink-up music sometimes in the literature where in bands, I'm sorry, in bars, they start out low and kind of dum, 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 and then it rises, 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 yay, and you drink, theoretically. So I thought you should hear that as we hear it in our homes. This is Front Line of Boone Street, and again, the quiet bar. And this is 8/26, 20/24. And I can get you the time. I didn't put it on my sheet here. It may even be on the tape. And there's the last one. I will leave the tapes as part of the evidence that if there's a problem between Dan and I about which tape is which, I'll correct. They're all tapes. I didn't want a couple of them that had swearing that I didn't notice at first and other behaviors to be played in a public meeting. Noise violations and decimal readings. Residents conducted their own monitoring from October 3, 2024, to October 18, 2025, 25 times, recording decimal levels between 62 and 71 after 10:00 PM, above the residential limit of 55. Decimal readings of 65 are twice as loud as 55 to the human ear. And so when we say they're 65, which these are all 62 to 71, that is way over the limit. Point or two? Well, turn it down. Don't do it again. All right, let me read some of these to you. In October, 64, 65, 66, 65. I can give you the dates if you want it.
What would be your most recent reading that you have there?
October 18, 65. I'll go down, September 26, 65, September 5, 65, with a 57, 400 feet from the property. 400 feet. That's how I always know if it's over and I don't call for a noise ordinance violation unless I've sometimes checked it. After two years, though, I can tell pretty well whether it's worth a walk or not worth a walk, that it's a 65 range. August 2, 63, August 2, 61, August 22, 63, July 13, 62, July 12, 63, July 5, 10:40 PM, 67, live music, that's the live music one, I believe, July 3, 64, June 27, 64, June 20, 64, June 14, 64, June 13, 64, June 12, 62, June 6, 71, with a maximum of 94. Had a motorcycle going down the street, I think it meant it to you, President Mendez, that was 98 one night that I thought was pretty loud, but it's kind of rivaled it in some ways. And then it goes on, 66, this is going into May, 63, November, October, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I can send these to you if you'd like the complete listing of it. Noise complaints. I'm going to go through this, but the frustration even mentioning the term is incredible. However, we did not agree that making a noise complaint was the route for us to get this solved. We were told, make a noise complaint, community officer, chief, both chiefs, nothing. Nothing has come from a noise complaint. Nothing. In any case, we took 43. Saturday night, I said, earlier in the week, I'm not going out anymore. It was so loud at 9:30 that I went out, walked down, 64, took a decimal reading, said I'm going to take a video, which I said I'm not going to do anymore because I was frustrated. I went to talk to the policeman on the corner, very nice gentleman, can you take a video with me? No, I can only do what I can know. I can go around later and take noise readings in the neighborhood, but I can't do that. I said, well, I'd like to take a video. I've asked before and the police have told me that's okay. So I took a video, but it's frustrating to find he knows what he should be doing. He knows, give him a radar gun and tell him to go out and mark traffic, he'll take that radar gun out. Why don't we trust him with a noise meter? It's like saying, hey, call up David. David, go out and find us some speeding cars, and if you come back and tell us you found a speeding car, we'll go out and say it was a speeding car. What is that all about? We would like to know. You set the regulations. Does Mr. Tierney engage with those regulations to ensure they're implemented? What's the chief's role in that? Who has said we will not for 18 years, when we've requested it time and time again, be told? Mr. Tierney and I back in July had an agreement that we signed by the five people who are within 200 feet of that establishment, many of them here today, Mike, Jen, Mark's across the street, et cetera, that said, as you do when you're asking someone to do Nord's readings, come, do readings at the where the loudest sound exits from the Boone Street Market into the residential area. All of those people agreed that you could go on their property. Three months later, after being told on three different occasions, it was all set, and then engaging with police on sight, okay, let's do it. Well, we'll go to your house and do it from the front of your house. The back of my house is 400 feet from Boone Street Market. The front is maybe 550 or 600. What are you training them to do? Not do what they know they should do? I'd like to read over the ordinance, and I think it's very important if you're looking at this ordinance. I've heard some mention... I've heard some mention of Jamestown as being a model. I sent you all 10 ordinances with suggestions about how they might improve it. I said, this is what I think might get there, but I gave you things as we will tonight. We're not going to set anything here, but let me tell you some options you might be able to pick up on. Jamestown is 70 all the time, and the part that is as bad as 70 when we're 55 and other places are 50 after 10 is that it takes out that a person can make a complaint, and the zoning officer can make a complaint, and the police can make a complaint. If that's the effort to improve this... Let me read the ordinance. Any person, including police officer or municipal zoning or building official, may be a complainant for the purpose of instructing action for any violation of this chapter noise. For any violation of this section, the receiving land used involved may include real property contiguous to or bordering the real property containing the source of the sound, which is the subject of this violation. We've been wasting resources, hundreds of hours of police, five, six at a time. Some of the calls to Boone Street Market have five police officers, names on them. Sometimes, in all honesty, it's two and then the same name again, but sometimes it's two detectives and a sergeant, et cetera, et cetera. This time, we didn't get the data. We asked for the data, we didn't get the data. We said, we heard it was coming out Thursday, we asked on Thursday to get the data on these things, arrests and this. We didn't get it. It's a little hard to believe that in fact we can have a long-term solution until next November, when there's no data to present from the town, so I hope you'll take that into consideration. The next thing is, how do we have such a misperception about how this works that I, that other people in this room can't make a noise complaint? And they can't say, I'm not doing it from my property, I'm doing it because I'm a concerned citizen. And so basically, you—police officer can cite a business for a noise violation without complaint from a neighboring property owner, and other residents can report violations. Most municipalities have noise ordinance that prohibit excessive or unreasonable noise. The officers have the authority to enforce these rules and issue citations based on their own observations or complaints from the public. This is because noise laws are often based on decimal levels or general definition of unreasonable noise that can be determined through official observation. A person of average hearing 100 or 200 feet from it doesn't have to tell you what the song is, doesn't have to tell you what the conversation is, they just have to hear it. And decimal readings at the property line over 55 decimals, not just through residents' complaint. Together, they alleviate this, oh, it's a machine, and it's not a person. drunk driving, right? You got the measurement, and you've got physically observing someone doing something. Both together, Providence just had someone bring them up on the case of, oh, this 200 feet thing, what the heck? I don't believe in that. I'm going to take you to court. Because what? Providence won, taking it to the state. All right. Officer response to the issue of citation based on road measurements of the noise limits. Any resident can file a complaint about the noise levels regardless of whether they're directly affected by the neighbor or property owner. Officials can take noise measurements at the property line to determine the noise meets levels. Sorry.
Oh, you're actually going too fast for her to keep up.
All right. Yeah, I promised Mark I'd go fast, so I'll slow down. I'm from New York. Officials take noise measurements at the property line to determine the noise exceeds the permitted level. Citations—if a noise is found to violate, a citation is given. Violation can lead to fines, or business odor, or ocumen, or the person causing the noise. I mentioned before, Freedom and Information Act, that we didn't get anything I'd believe. We got some of the materials that says, hey, we stopped by, we did—no action was involved, we gave some help, and you can't tell what it was, except occasionally it'll say an arrest or something. But we do know that pastimes—the noise readings have been 16 violations over 65 days, and that for the current time period, there were 126 calls to Boone Street Market over 118 days, with as many as four officers signing it. So that's 43 noise complaints, 15 investigations, what I was talking about. You took these investigations, they overlap with services rendered. There was an argument, went into the street, we were worried there was going to be an altercation, the police came and handled it, no arrest. Removed hazard parking, assisted student, two parking, but we don't know. We believe that they were just in Boone Street Market, because there's a lot more parking violations than that in the area, obviously. Police medical service, arrest, threat complaint, piece restored, got there, the security couldn't handle it, the police handled it, but we don't know what it was, except that. And that's not acceptable. You have it, I believe. We should have it as well, even if it was given Thursday. We should have had it Friday, as I was told, well, you have to prove it, President Mendez. Then I was told that the solicitor had to prove it, and it's just not right. Underage drinking—we've heard verbally that were a number of them. You know how many there were. Parking, but not the surrounding area. Two vehicle accidents. You know, in the past 14 arrests, simple assault, battery, disso-ordinarily conduct, unlawful drinking, misdemeanor underage drinking, possession of alcohol, open container, consumption of alcohol in public, urinating in public, DUI, refusal to submit to breathalyzer, open container, September 5, September 12, September 19, October 18, non-fatal accidents, we talked about, fight reported, fight and fake ID, fight and parole and drinking, false hit and run claimed by staff. Now, to my—some of our recommendations for this. Suggested, Narragansett, update the noise ordinance procedures for the enforcement of ordinances. No ordinance update. Add 200 feet from the property line, person of normal hearing, to decimal reading maximums. Noise ordinance update. Yelling and screaming into the street. You fix the music, for the most part, when they comply, after 10?
Just as a reminder, the current stipulations are all outdoor live music will cease at 9:00 p.m., all outdoor music will cease at 11:00 p.m.
Yep. Yes, that's correct as well. So what we're then saying, suggested is CSOL outdoor activities at 9, patrons, music, TVs, done. Last call inside at 10, stop serving at 11, no noise escaping the building, just like Poncho O'Malley's, just like PJ's, just like the old turtle soup shore house now, and other places. You know, there should be some level of consistency. PJ's, 16 people outside, no music. Other places, quiet combo. No amplification outside, those types of things. Reduce hours, entertainment restrictions, light, non-amplified combo, allowing conversation, alcohol service with service of a meal only, no decorative lighting admitted to the neighborhood homes, service of drinking of alcohol may be restricted at tables, limitation on seating, require alcohol beverage only to be served at a bar or seated, restricting area of premises in which alcohol may be served or consumed indoors only, no outdoor entertainment or music, engaged police and 8 o'clock until closing, Thursday through Sunday, whatever, applicant for third-party noise monitoring. And with that, I conclude my testimony to you, and I hope we can make some progress. I truly feel if you'd started—well, not you, the previous council started in June, we could have been done with this in mid-July. If they'd stood firm and say, no, this is what you said, this is the reading, you have to stop, you have to adjust. But that hasn't happened, and until we do, this is going to continue and continue and continue because we have not done any citing, any monitoring of this. And to tell you the truth, Alex, you said we're going to do it at the last meeting, and Mr. Colonnay, as you said, we're going to measure and monitor your progress. I believe that, and so please, let's do so at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just as a soundbite for that, we are very—I am—very much willing to sponsor an updated noise ordinance. It is currently—there's a lot of legality that's in review, so that's what's slowed this down a little bit, but it is very much—I fully expect and hope to be bringing it before the town and town council for consideration next month. So.
Sure. I do. Thank you. Michael Maiallo, M.A.I.E.L.L.O. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for giving me a few moments to speak tonight. As I said, my name is Michael Maiallo. I live in 73 Congdon Street, directly behind Boone Street Market. The pictures that—the videos that David just showed is essentially the view from my backyard, so that visual and that noise is essentially what I hear in my backyard. You know, when my family and I first moved and bought our home, the property behind us was a laundromat. It was quiet, simple, part of the neighborhood rhythm. When we had a restaurant would replace it, we were genuinely excited. It was described as a family-oriented neighborhood spot, a place for good food, neighbors, laughter. We did picture kids sharing ice cream cones after playing in the park and families having dinner on a summer night. That was sold to the town. That's not what happened. By day, yes, it still has some of that charm, but when the sun goes down, it transforms into something entirely different, something different than what was represented to the town. What was supposed to be a family restaurant becomes every night an outdoor bar and club, open until 1:00 a.m., 365 days, nights per year. Are there service workers there late night? Perhaps, but a tiny amount as compared to the overwhelmingly late-night party crowd. And from our backyard, as you can actually have seen before, it's relentless. It's like having a party in your backyard every single night. The crowd rolls—the crowd noise rolls in like the surf. Voices, laughter, shouting, the thump of bass, that you don't just hear, you feel. Some nights, it's so deep that it literally shakes the glass in our back room. We watch this happen, not occasionally, but every single night. We can't sit in our back patio and enjoy a glass of wine. We can't have a quiet conversation. We can't even play our own music without competing with the constant roar from Boone Street. Imagine sitting in your backyard. Well, we can't, right? Never. Not once in a long while, never. There have been multiple occasions when the noise ordinance has been exceeded, as David went through. But even when it's technically within the limits, the experience is unbearable. It's not the decimal reading, it's the constant invasion of sound. Even in the daytime, live music has interrupted work calls that we've been on from our home. Imagine trying to sound professional on a call when guitar strumming and singing of live music rattles your windows. This is not what any homeowner expects when they buy in a residential neighborhood. We support small businesses. We love good restaurants. But there must be a line between a lively local business and a year-round outdoor nightclub, operating a few feet from people's bedrooms. We're asking the council to restore the balance. Limit operating hours to 10:00 p.m., like all the nearby PR restaurants, or require that the outdoor patio on the south end closes by 10:00 p.m. every evening to protect the homes that border it. I know Mark had mentioned the meetings, the three meetings. I attended one of them. There was talk about a pergola and soundproof. I'm a little bit skeptical that'll do anything, but that was over three months ago, and we still never saw the engineering report from that. So I think things have to be done beyond that. These are not unreasonable requests. They still allow the business to thrive, but they also let the people who live there claim a basic right, the ability to rest, to enjoy our homes, to step into our backyard and hear the crickets again instead of a crowd noise every night. This is about fairness, it's about balance, it's about preserving the livability of a neighborhood that so many of us care deeply about. Thank you for your time and for listening, not just to my words, but to what life has become for those of us living behind this establishment, 365 nights a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Jennifer Lassige, L.A.S.S.I.G.E. Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. This is the first time I've spoken, and my husband, Michael, indicated that we live at 73 Congdon Street. We live right behind Boone Street Market. So I really wanted to take an opportunity to emphasize some of the things that people have said, including my husband, but also add some points of my own. We moved to our forever home in Narragansett, so excited. We had bought this home several years ago. We knew the layout of the community. We knew the layout of the neighborhood. The whole fabric of that neighborhood, being a mix of small businesses and residential homes, right near the water, was absolutely perfect. We loved that we could walk to restaurants, we could walk to get our coffee, we could walk to church. We loved the vibrant life that was right in our own little neighborhood. So when we learned that somebody had purchased the old train station and they were going to renovate it, it was very, very exciting. And we heard what the plans were. So we watched that train station be developed into a beautiful building. We would take our walks, and we would peek in the windows, and we would talk to the workers, and we would see it unfold, and we were so excited. As a matter of fact, we met the owner very briefly in a coffee shop one morning and said, we hear you're the owner. That place looks amazing. And she said, yes, it's going to be a family eatery. I have kids that play basketball, they can go over and get a burger. And we said, that sounds great. It's going to be amazing. We knew that upstairs, there was either apartments or an Airbnb with the intent of people either staying up there or living up there. So never in our wildest dreams would we have thought that this would have morphed into basically a club at night, especially where we thought people are going to be living above it. So we didn't know that we should be arguing against anything. We had heard directly from the owner what the thought process was. So as it got developed, and it continued to morph into what it is today, our quality of life has been significantly impacted. What you folks saw in the video is what we live in our home every single night. We go into our back family room to watch TV with that as our background. It's always coming through our house. As a matter of fact, we wanted to do some renovations, and our initial plan was to have our bedroom be that back section and pull our family room up to the front, where all of our family likes to gather. We can no longer do that. We've had to scrap that plan because we cannot have our bedroom any further back than it is right now, which is terribly sad. We don't have a very big lot. We don't have— From 10 o'clock on is unbearable. And as far as a safety issue, I will say it has not happened, it has happened more than once, that I've had to actually help children go across that street because there's so many cars that are clogged up in front of Boone Street Market, they can't see. And there was one time, I just jumped out in front of traffic so two little ones could cross and take their basketball across the street. It's, it's just impacting so many different areas of our community, and I wish that, and I hope that you folks really look at this and think about what it might be like to have, to live with this every night and find a way to compromise and help us have some quality of life back. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, just a quick pulse check. Is there any, raise your hand if you're here for any other liquor establishment, just, okay, please continue. Thank you.
Absolutely. My name is Sylvia Spears, S.Y.L.V.I.A.S.P.E.A.R.S. Good evening. I'm Sylvia Spears. I reside at 165 Boone Street in Narragansett. My daughter resides at 165A Boone Street in Narragansett. I'm a longtime resident of Narragansett, and my home has been in my family for 100 years. I'm not a newcomer to Narragansett. I haven't prepared a speech tonight, and I wasn't even sure I was going to say anything, but I do want to share just a snippet of what it truly means to live in proximity to Boone Street Market. I, like other folks, were very excited about Boone Street Market, and I said that the last time I spoke before the council. I can't stand to walk down Boone Street anymore. This is what it means now. It means constant noise. It means Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sometimes Sunday night, mostly Sunday afternoon, cars nonstop turning around in my driveway every night, all night, multiple times, so much so that now I just look out my window and go like this. It means cars parked backwards like yesterday on Boone Street, so you know parking is across the street from the playground. Well, I guess some people who go to Boone Street Market can't take the time to make a U-turn somewhere or go around the block so that they can actually park their cars in the right direction. It means I can't get out of my driveway. I've at least had three times when I almost had an accident because I cannot see to get out of my driveway because the cars that are there. Now, we can look at whether the town should remove some parking spaces on either side of residential driveways in that area, but that would be a shame to reduce parking because that's a challenge anyhow. It means now, walking down the street means that I am stepping over vomit on the sidewalk on Boone Street. It means some mornings, a particular morning this summer, not only was I stepping over vomit on Boone Street, but I had to step over a used condom at the bottom of my driveway. Now, I just want to ask members of the council rhetorically, do you think this affects our quality of life? I think so. I'll give you some other examples. What it means to live near Boone Street Market now is that when my daughter takes her dog to walk, she can be followed by a crowd of four or five drunk guys down as she walks further down Boone Street in the middle of the night while they're talking all kinds of trash to her. It can mean when she and her partner are walking down the street with a dog at night, that a couple of guys decided they wanted to try to create some kind of a disturbance and have a fight. My daughter is six foot two, and her partner is six foot six. So you've got to be pretty you-know-whatsey to think you're going to just walk up to a couple of people walking down the street and talk trash in the middle of the night. That's what it means. It means for those little kids, they can't cross the street at that crosswalk. I've on many occasions, just like my neighbor, had to go out in the street and stop traffic. It means cars speeding up and down the street. It means yelling and screaming every night, especially Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sometimes Sunday night. I love music. My son is a musician. I have no objection to music, but if I can hear the words to the song that's playing in Boone Street Market in my house, the music is too loud. It's better than it was, but I can still hear the words to the music in my house, and the constant roar of noise and sound and traffic is just too much, and I would hope that the council would do something about it. About a month ago or so, maybe more, I sent a communication to the town council through the town's website. I don't know about you all, but I grew up in a family, when somebody communicates to you, you respond, even if the response is, "Thank you for your communication. We will take it under consideration." I sent a message that probably took me two hours to draft to the council, and I received nothing. In my, in my family, that would be considered disrespectful. So I'm hoping that this council will restore our faith in your, in the community, that we actually are heard, are listened to, and that, again, as our neighbor said here, that there is some kind of balance to this. I'm all for businesses to be successful. I'm all for Boone Street Market to be successful and to thrive and to have a robust group of people who are there. I, I don't want to have to tiptoe over vomit when I walk down the street, so please do something.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room wishes to speak? Sure.
My name's David Kusajani. Yes. David Kusajani. I live at 100 Seculated Drive, Narragansett. K-O-U-T, S as in Sally, O-G-I-A-N-E. You're welcome. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I came here tonight with an open mind. If I had a place to sit, it'd be up the middle here, to be honest with you, because we don't have enough compromise in the United States. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is look at this fairly tonight and find some middle ground like we can't in Washington, D.C. right now. So I have a frame of reference. I was a bartender for 19 years at Charlie O's, may it rest in peace. Had a good time there, pocketed some cash. So we used to have a tiki bar upstairs, very similar situation. We had neighbors that complained about the loud noise and whatnot, so the previous owner, Charlie, decided to close it in. I couldn't even imagine the second owner having an outside patio open with alcoholic beverages past 10:00 p.m. because I know what the neighbors would have done. They would be doing the exact same thing that's going on this evening. So it appears as if this establishment, it's a good establishment, they deserve to, you know, make money and thrive in the community. It, it's a lot like Charlie O's. You know, we had a fantastic restaurant, but in the evening, late evening, it would metamorphosize into a nightclub, mostly for URI students. So I say if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's a duck past 10 o'clock at night. So these people are here, they're coming with hat in hand, and they're telling you, you know, what it's like, and I'm hoping you can make some reasonable choices here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Thank you. Good evening, town council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I did write a couple pages-long speech, but I just, I just want to let you know that I agree wholeheartedly with everything that my neighbors have said. The stress of the noise, constant noise, ongoing, lack of sleep, it's really cumulative, and, and it's just a nightmare when you can't sleep and you constantly get woken up and you don't feel safe in your own home, people blocking your driveway and fighting outside. And this happens all the time. We know that it's a residential mixed with commercial neighborhood, and we've never ever had an issue with any other restaurant or business. We support our local businesses, and we're used to noise, we're used to, you know, parking issues. But I'm not even going to read this because everything that they said represents me and my family, and I'm just getting battle fatigue that it's a year later and nothing has been done. And it really hurts when you live in a small town and the owners gaslight the neighbors for having the nerve to speak about our experiences. They call us whiners and entitled and minorly inconvenienced, and, you know, that hurts just as much because it is a small town, and it's not true. I'm a hard-working person who has to get up early and go to work every day, which is really hard when you can't get a good night's sleep with the windows closed and the fan on, and the kind of language that I have to listen to, it's just, it's rattling. It's, it's not the neighborhood that I lived in for 28 years, and these are all good, upstanding citizens, and I think we just deserve to have our quality of life. And it's really hard when we have to drag ourselves here and speak about this time after time. It's not easy for us, and it's just, it's just hard to convey our individual experience. But it's just our lives now. It's every day, it's every night, and then to be vilified on top of it is just the icing on the cake. They are not good neighbors. They, I don't think they even tried to be. So everything that they said they were going to do or try to do never happened. Instead, they just talked negatively about us like we were the problem. And you know what? They don't live here, and they don't sleep here. So I just want you to, I just want you to believe us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from this side of the room? Okay, now I'll go to this side of the room. Just, just before that we go to this side of the room, is everyone back there being represented by you, or should I see if anyone back there has an opportunity, like, does anyone back there want to speak? Yeah. If you wouldn't mind, I just-
He's my expert witness.
Oh, okay.
He's an engineer. So again, Jack McGreen, I represent Boone Street Market. In hindsight, perhaps I should have spoke first, just to give you some insight as to what we've been doing for the last year. I know Mr. Cook, I think he was the first speaker, said that, you know, nothing's been done on this pergola. It's been, it's been a, it's been a project for over a year now. It's a $500,000 project to get this pergola up and going. We had some setbacks. Initially, they were going to put some soundboards up closer to the building. Engineering-wise and sound-wise, that did not work out. It had to get re-engineered. I'm not going to go through the details. I'll have the engineer come up and speak about that. They also hired a third-party independent engineer at the suggestion of the towns they brought in, and then halfway through it, they realized they were going to need some dimension relief from the zoning board. Turns out they were within the setback. That wasn't really picked up until about halfway through the project, so they haven't been doing nothing. My point of, of saying that is because they do intend to spend a fair amount of money to try and enclose that left-hand side of the building, which I believe is creating most of the, the noise issue. I know there's been a lot of people that came up here and talking about modifying their hours of operation. So I'd like to first have Mr. the engineer come up and speak from Principi Engineering, Seth from Principi, come up and speak about what's been going on and give you an update on how we intend to address the outdoor space on the left-hand side of the building. Then after that, I'm going to have Lindsay come up and just talk to you about the operational issues of shutting down an outside place of business at a certain time. So with that being said, I'm going to bring up the engineer first. He's just going to walk you through what he's been doing over the last year, answer any of your questions, and then I'll try and keep this short. I'll have Lindsay come up and talk to you about her concerns about hours of operation.
Yes. Seth Lemoyne, last name is L.E.M.O.I.N.E. Professional engineer with Principi Engineering, and Boone Street Market engaged our professional engineering services for the installation or permitting of a sound, or a pergola. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So we've been working with Boone Street Market for the past six or more months, and the project's been gaining some more legs. So we started out with a existing condition survey. There's been some changes to that, all in preparation of putting a proposed plan together for the pergola. We've also conducted some structural engineering for the pergola, as it would attach to the existing roof structure of the main building, and that was quite complex to perform those calculations and get those in line. And we're now at that point where we're ready to finalize our plans. It's been months of work, and it's been a long road, but with a lot of due diligence, we're, we're right there, and it's kind of coming together in the past few weeks.
So could you talk a little bit about the, the sound, the soundproofing of that area and, and what the, what you hope that will, will do to the, to the complaints that you've heard tonight from the different neighbors?
Yes. Now, keep in mind, I am not a, in a sound engineer, audio engineer. I am a structural engineer and a civil engineer. So in looking at the, the soundboards, they want to have those suspended from the rear portion of the pergola structure that is going to overhang the, the-
So, we started out with a existing condition survey. There's been some changes to that, all in preparation of putting a proposed plan together for the pergola. We've also conducted some structural engineering for the pergola as it would attach to the existing roof structure of the main building. And that was quite complex to perform those calculations and get those in line. And we're now at that point where we're ready to finalize our plans. It's been months of work and it's been a long road, but with a lot of due diligence, we're right there. And it's kind of coming together in the past few weeks.
So, could you talk a little bit about the sound, the soundproofing of that area and what the, what you hope that will do to the complaints that you've heard tonight from the different neighbors?
Yes. Now, keep in mind, I am not a sound engineer, audio engineer. I'm a structural engineer and a civil engineer. So, in looking at the soundboards, they want to have those suspended from the rear portion of the pergola structure that is going to overhang the fence line. And that would maintain access on the existing concrete emergency exit sidewalk, not obstructing any of those emergency doors on the fence line. And in combination with the pergola, that would, the idea would be to help contain the noise within the property.
Would you mind providing us with some context as to what those setbacks have been?
Yes. So, there's several different portions of the property that are going to request relief and we've identified those. So, for the pergola, proposed pergola structure, the offsets from the property line are approximately five and a half feet on average. They vary by a few inches from end to end as it's not exactly parallel. In addition, the, looking to have a movable portion of the sound barrier extend towards the Boone Street and the open patio area that goes beyond the pergola. The pergola is going to just go over the patio area that's more or less in the same dimension as the building. And the movable sound wall would extend towards Boone Street on that, where the fire pit it currently is in that area is approximately 14 feet tall. And that would be extended out or retracted back during peak hours.
And this is all inside the existing fence that presently exists on the property on that left-hand side?
The sound wall is on the outside of the fence.
Outside of the fence.
The pergola covering wouldn't extend beyond the fence line. The frame structure would extend beyond the main support structure, but the actual pergola louvers would be from the fence line to the building. And they're movable. So, during daylight hours, they're open and then during evening hours, they can close them.
So, I understand the structural setbacks. Thank you for articulating that. It sounds like this request, as you alluded to, was made six months ago. They came to you. Like, why would it take six months to get to this point? I'm just trying to wrap my head around, like, it sounds like we are recognizing a lot of, you know, things that were, you know, could have been measured out or known six months ago. So, I'm just wondering, and I don't mean to show any disrespect, I'm just trying to figure out setbacks in regarding to moving this project forward. I'm just trying to figure out what were those roadblocks and why are we looking at a different situation today? And with your confidence that this is going to be moving forward?
I don't think there's, it's necessarily any different than it was maybe six months ago with the overall project. I think some of the changes that we were experiencing were some of the dimensional reliefs and lot coverage issues. And as we had some meetings with the town and communications back and forth with the town, we've had to return with a survey crew out there to resurvey the property, identify all the structures and what, which structures actually contribute towards the lot coverage. And then, as well, some of the structures with requesting additional dimensional relief on some of the structures, particularly the containers towards the rear of the property.
So, was this information asked, you asked from you at different times or was it asked all at once?
Yeah, it was asked at different times. We started out with, really, we started with a structural analysis. That was the first step. Then the initial survey was done and establishing a parking plan. And then the dimensional relief came in after that. And so, now we're right at the end of it, finally.
So, you would say that the follow-up questions that were asked of you is what delayed the project?
Partially, yes.
And just, just so you know, the way the process works is, it's a back and forth between Wayne and a work and process with the planning department. But Wayne, at the first outset, because he needs to give us a denial in order for us to apply, you know, submit an application, that's the first step, you get your denial from Wayne. And, you know, it's been going back and forth and, you know, it's just a process. It's, it's like that on every project, that, you know, things come up. We didn't, you know, at one point, we were going to be putting a, I think we had a movable truck on there, a food truck. And they wanted us to address that and we were going to suppose to put that on the plan. So, we started to put that on the plan, then we decided to back off. So, it's just like, you know, when someone asks you to, can you show this on a plan? Believe it or not, oh, we'll get that right done for you tomorrow. It could delay, you know, it could be a six-week delay every time you make a change to a plan. It's just the way it works. But that being said, my client is committed to putting this money into this project. I know Wayne's away this week on a, on a, conference, yes. So, I think he'll be back next week. I'm sure shortly thereafter, we'll get our denial and we'd be ready to submit within a week after that. So, that's the timetable that we're looking at right now. It would go to planning, in my opinion, it would go to zoning. I know there's some questions as to whether or not we should go unified development versus planning zoning. I've read the statute, the definitions. I think we go planning and zoning unless the town advises me otherwise, but I believe it's a planning zoning application. So, there'll be two meetings, one before planning, then go to zoning.
Just another quick follow-up here. I do want to acknowledge, I do have some serious concerns. You know, again, this was, it was a very unfortunate circumstance at this council shortly after getting sworn in, was faced with this extremely difficult and challenging liquor license hearing. We all, I think, I don't, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we all ran on the promise of supporting and listening to the concerns of all residents at the same time, wanting to support local businesses. And, you know, I remember knocking on the doors and going around the pier area to speak with local businesses. And to have this be, you know, passed off to us, I think was a very sad disservice by the previous council. But with that being said, you know, I, I think, along with the rest of the council here, wanted to give the benefit of the doubt as a brand-new council that came aboard. And again, I'm not going to speak for anyone individually, this is just what I observed. But here we are a year later and I hear a lot of the same concerns. And it's almost like an unfortunate déjà vu. And my concern is, and I appreciate the dedication that's being made here by Boone Street Market to get this ball rolling and the project moving. But my concern is, are we going to be here in another year and this project has just faced delays, delays, delays? I fully expect there will be more delays because there's always that unknown, right? And, you know, when we're putting ourselves out there, we're, we're the first line of defense for the town and the residents in the immediate area. So, we have to take into consideration what happens when things do go wrong or when things don't go according to plan. And I am a little disappointed to be here a year later, to be hearing the same concerns from residents in the area and to not see more action having been taken. I do understand and want to acknowledge that things do take time, but we are a year later. And in many ways, I do wish that the first six months after the first Boone Street Market liquor license hearing that we were so graciously handed. I wish within that first six months that this assessment would have been done so that the planning and zoning would have already had opportunity to review these plans. And instead of having this hearing today, we would just be doing an annual renewal. I don't think anyone on either side, nor do any of us up here, like to hold public hearings like this. We want the town to heal and compromise and come together. And I love Boone Street Market, but I also understand and empathetic, sympathetic to the residents that have expressed their concerns this evening. And I know I'm speaking to you and I speak to everyone listening. But again, I just wanted to share my opinion and concerns, genuine concern, that it's not going to be a speedy approval process. Even just getting it from this point forward through planning and zoning could take a couple of months. And this council could be completely different, hopefully not, but it could be, in another year's time where it's going to be the same old song and dance. So, again, it's my concern. And it's just a reminder to the council as we discuss and delegate up here, that we have to take into consideration when things don't go according to plan and look at things as they are today. And as things have been alluded to tonight, maybe there are some changes that are made this evening. Doesn't mean that they can't be changed again in the future, but I just wanted to express my concerns from a timeline perspective that we are now a year into this. Does anyone else on the council have any other questions or comments?
Probably speaking, I share your concerns, Alex. You had mentioned that you're in the final stages of this. What makes you think that and what makes you think that we're going to proceed quickly with this to completion?
Well, I'm not sure if you're going to proceed quickly with this. However, we're going to have a complete package of plans put together that will conform to the submission requirements for the building permit.
Yeah, so, once we, once we get the denial from Wayne, literally, we could file, file the application within, within the week. Then it depends on, and then the planning department will deem the application to be complete or if we're missing something, again, back and forth, do this to the plan, change this. Plan will be complete and then depending on how many applications happen to be on that month, I suspect, you know, maybe if I got the application in next week, we could get on the planning board agenda for December, but more likely January, to be honest with you. Could be December. It depends on how quickly, how backed up the planning board is, but probably more like, you know, December for the planning board than January would be zoning.
Can you identify any areas at this point in time which the planning board may reject it?
I can't. And I've had the discussion informally with Jill and with Bob Craven about, you know, how I should proceed. You know, some, you know, some people might think I should go under the unified development section of the ordinance. I think I should go planning zoning. But I can, I'll just tell you the confusion. And it's no one's fault, it's just, it's a confusing statute. But if you look under unified development, it says the process by which the planning board is authorized to review and approve dimensional variances for the property's undergoing view as a minor land development or minor subdivision. Well, this certainly wouldn't be a subdivision, we're not subdividing property. Then it says UDR shall not be available for major land development. So, I go, okay, let me go to the definition of major land development. So, you go down to major land development and it says, "Any land development project not classified as a minor land development," right? So, then I go to minor land development and it says, "All non-residential land development projects shall be considered as major land development plans." So, I interpret that to be, I have a non-residential land development project, although there is residential above it, but it's predominantly commercial, therefore, I'd be considered a major land development plan and I want to be able to go under the unified development review ordinance. So, that's why I'm going planning zoning. But if someone could tell me tomorrow that I'm wrong, then I wouldn't waste my time filing in one direction and then going in another direction after I get denied, you know, or asked saying, no, that's not the way we want you to go. So, I think planning zoning is the way to go and that's the way I'm proceeding unless I'm told otherwise.
All right. That's the only reason why you think, why you could foresee this being denied?
Yes, I don't, yeah, everything else is, I mean, doesn't mean we're going to get approval at the zoning board level. You know, planning has to make a positive or negative recommendation. Then when we go to zoning, we give them our information and they could deny it and then we don't get the pergola. I mean, that's possible. Just won't know until we get up there.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on the council have any questions before we move on?
Two, two questions. So, if you do get through everything that you just proposed, how long is the actual construction of this going to take to get everything done?
The work itself is not intensely long. I'm not sure how the backlog is of the manufacturer and installer of the pergola. But if everything was readily available, six weeks.
And if you could just refresh my memory, Attorney McGreen. So, initially, you worked with an, I know you said you're not an audio engineer, but initially, because everyone's saying, hopefully, this is going to happen, it's going to help. Initially, and maybe Lindsay can tell us, I think I recall at some point, did you actually work with an audio engineer to come up with this plan to, that this was going to help?
I'll have Lindsay, Lindsay come up and answer that question.
We had the property, we- You need to swear me on, yes. I do. Lindsay, L-I-N-D-S-A-Y Holmes, H-O-L-M-E-S, 24 Fernleaf Trail in Ericans. We had two separate acoustic engineering companies come out and give us a variety of different products and approaches. I know when I was before you last, we were speaking about the sound baffle approach as opposed to the sound curtain. The sound curtain has better coverage and can extend further down where we, some advice from the neighbors that they thought our original plan left that Boone Street east-facing area, if you will, still vulnerable to sound escape. So, we went with the curtain approach and we do have acoustic engineers who presented that plan to us, which was another one of the back and forths, if you will, as this plan evolved. I want to just be very, very clear. We have been, we have a great working relationship with the town. We feel like nobody is really intentionally slowing us down. It's just a very, it's an arduous, you know, project. It's very, and we want to get this right. This isn't, for me, this isn't like a design approach. This isn't, how can I make my patio look pretty? I mean, I, I can do that all day long. For me, this is, how can we do this and, and capture sound? That is what's driving all of this. So, we have been very open to feedback from the neighbors, like the sound curtain as an example, on how we can make this, not just throw this pad, this pergola up so we can say, hey, we checked this box, we did this, but how can we do it in a way that it's actually going to have tangible change? If at the end of the day, this pergola goes up and it doesn't enclose sound, we've wasted everybody's time. And I share in the president's frustrations, I'm embarrassed to be in front of you without a, I keep saying, a permit approval. I'm not even trying to get a permit approval at this point, I'm trying to get a permit denied. I am very frustrated. I'm very beaten down. It breaks my heart to hear how my neighbors are. This is not what we want. We've tried to, you know, we've tried to hold these neighbor meetings where we can have this, you know, dialogue. So, all of the little changes that we have been implementing since we last met here, we can trace them and we could ask how things are going. And Brandon Johnson, my GM, has, you know, they, everybody on that side has his phone number. They, he's been walking the property with these neighbors. It's, I know this is the big tangible change that everybody wants to see. Me, more than anybody, wants to see this pergola up, but we have been making tons of little changes along the way. I don't want anybody to feel on either side that we have just been dragging our heels and, and ignoring town requests for, you know, information on this. We've been diligently working towards it and we've done a lot of other little things that I could stand up here for an hour and a half and tell you all of these little changes from paid police detail. I know town resources and, you know, police resources being diverted to Boone Street has been weighing on me since we opened, which is why we've paid for police detail. I pay for two officers four nights a week. I'm in constant contact with the police to try to not only track and reinforce those changes, but make little, make little adjustments, having them patrol further down Boone Street outside of, you know, Mr. Cook's property to try to just be that presence that's going to deter all of this. And for me, as I sit here and listen to the continued complaints and, and see some videos that were, you know- that were, you know, dating back to last year, it's hard for me to sit here and separate and really track all of these changes because I feel like some of the data that I'm getting back says that these changes are making a big difference. We have addressed a lot of the things that have been brought up tonight, the parking spots in front that were, that were making that crosswalk hard from a visibility perspective. Those have been removed. We've changed the Uber pickup spot. We did the employee shuttle. I rented another parking lot. The police detail increased in security. We have, we've turned sound down on the speakers at 10 o'clock. We have no outdoor live music, still to this day, no outdoor music. We, and clearly, all of these changes have not resulted in enough tangible change for our neighbors. I am not standing here saying that this is not a problem. I am working diligently towards what I am being advised by not just myself, but the team of people I have working on this, acoustic engineers, Principi, from not just a structural engineering perspective, but from a just overall site plan perspective. And whenever you go through a review of this magnitude, there are little things on the site plan that come up. The bathroom trailer, which was a solution to people reporting, you know, people were peeing in their yards. That's unacceptable. And we immediately put the bathroom trailer to offset that. But what that ended up doing is kind of triggering the town to say, okay, we've got to get this trailer right. It's in your parking lot. It's taking up two parking spots. That's not acceptable. So that was another cause for survey, which again is, you know, like Seth said, some of these asks and changes, which are well within everybody's right to ask of us, it's just, I wish that it could be an immediate change. Seth has other clients besides Boone Street Market, so every time, you know, we have to go for another survey or have, you know, his team come back out. I don't have them at my beck and call. I'm constrained by everybody's schedules. So this is something that we really, really are working towards. And I, you know, when I heard one of the last gentlemen speak about how they, you know, contained that space at Charlie O's, that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to contain that back patio. It is very clear to all of us, ownership, operations, neighbors alike, that the sound issue is coming from that back patio. We are trying to enclose that. And from, one thing that is giving me renewed hope is that the engineer said that if this one sound curtain doesn't result in tangible change, they could put another. You can stack them. So I do think this plan has opportunity to grow. I don't think this is going to be a last-ditch effort. I think this structure gives us a space in which we can hang additional sound panels. We are going to get the sound down on that back patio. I know that Jack mentioned the food truck that we were originally working towards, which was a minor delay, which we ended up just, I guess, a couple of neighbors complained. We said, you want to know what? We're trying to work towards compromise. We're just going to remove the food truck. Operationally, what we were trying to do there was give a little bit of a draw for our guests to gather in the north patio because that is underutilized, in my opinion. So we were trying to get creative and put some additional, you know, appeal in that north patio to try to get some of the people out of the north, I'm sorry, the south patio to kind of redistribute some of the crowds there. We have increased security. We've increased our landscaping patrol to hope that the trash is improving. I think as long as the sound is an issue, I feel all of these other little changes just simply aren't enough. So we are working diligently with the town. I thank them for all of the attention that they've been giving to this, and I'm just very hopeful. I know that you asked about any kind of future delays. I think that the, I'm always trying to kind of proactively be ready to adapt if something does come up so we can pivot. I think, one, from what I could see, one of the biggest, I think, procedural delays, if you will, and maybe I feel this way because it's a path I haven't taken, Unified Development, just looking at the application, that seems really, really extensive, and it's a process that nobody on my team has gone through yet. So as far as unknowns, I think that if it was decided by all of you folks, that if we had to go unified, I think, even though that's one board, which sounds nice, it kind of sounds like a one-and-done, you don't have to go planning and then go zoning. From what I understand, it's a lengthy application process, or a lengthier application at least. So I think that the way that Jack is interpreting the statute, it seems more and more clear that planning and zoning is a path for this project. It's a path I've gone down numerous times. I feel very comfortable being able to navigate that along with, you know, Jack's expertise on the application end. I make no joke, Jack could do a planning board application in a sleep. So this is, this is a route forward that I do feel has less possible obstacles. And I think that's why we are so diligent at this stage. That's the whole reason that we go through this process with the building department, to make sure that before we even get to the denial perspective, that we have all of these different issues addressed now. So they are not going to come up when we apply and we go through a done-ness review with the planning board. I have the utmost faith in Jack and with Principi and with the sound engineers that we're working with. But I do, I'm before you frustrated and embarrassed. I know that a lot of this is my word. I just, which is why I wanted to kind of, you know, approach this a little bit differently tonight and bring a representative from Principi with me because a lot of the conversations have been directly with that firm and the town. So rather than me speaking for Seth and his team of engineers, I wanted him to give, be here and have the opportunity for you guys to see the progress that we've made. And I have full confidence that this investment is going to make a huge difference in the sound that's escaping the south patio.
I just, first of all, thank you very much. I know this isn't easy for anyone, and it's unfortunate, honestly, the cards that everyone's been dealt here through one shape or form by decisions made by no one in this room, probably. But, you know, I think, you know, my immediate question is, you know, it was already shared to us by the engineer that he received this inquiry six months ago. My question is, why only six months ago? Why was this not being sought after?
That's a great question. And I think a lot of my preparation was refreshing myself with the timeline of how all of this happened. So November of last year, so I don't know how many days after we met with you guys, is when we officially hired Distinctive Pergola, who is the company that is A, applying for the permit, and B, who is responsible for the materials, design, and construction of the pergola. They were actually first brought on in August of last year, and they were the ones that walked through all of the prospective ways that this structure could be built. We're in a very historic building. We've, or we just did this four-year restoration. This, again, was some, a plan that really had to be very thoroughly vetted. So between, you know, we had a couple of companies actually, you know, pitch us different products between, you know, say, August, September. We went under contract with them, I believe, in November, and that's when deposits were paid, materials were ordered. And it was around sometime that winter, maybe December, January, I'm kind of being general right now, is when we realized that not only was there a setback issue, but there was a lot coverage issue. The setbacks have changed since I've developed the property on 145 Boone Street, and it's a unique lot in that it's a commercial lot that abuts residential. So I have very unique setbacks on numerous sides of the property. So there's been a lot of evolution with the project that have, you know, resorted in these delays.
I didn't know if this was a good opportunity to ask questions or if you had to, if you had any additional statement you wanted to make first.
Yeah.
So, yep, go ahead. I was going to ask if anyone else has any questions first, so do you want to just kick us off?
I just want to ask if Principi.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh.
Well, yeah, no, go ahead.
So Donna. Okay. So I was going to ask that question about the sound engineer, you know? And there's no sound engineer right here now, right?
No.
Yeah. So what did the sound engineer say about when this thing is constructed? What is the percentage of sound that was going to be filtered with 220 people out there?
Between 10 to 14 decibel reduction. There are a lot of variables, and the sound engineers, there's two different, another thing that's complicating the vetting of the project is there's two, these are kind of overlying permits, if you will. We have one company that is constructing the pergola. They are not an acoustic firm. They are, there's no sound engineers on their firm. They just build beautiful pergolas. So that is who is at the helm for the building permit for the pergola. And then we've hired and vetted numerous different acoustic engineers to come in and attach these sound curtains to the back posts of the pergola.
So the, the, the posts are going to be 14 feet high?
Correct.
So your fence now is 10, 8, 10?
Seven, eight, seven?
Seven, eight.
Whatever my code is on that side. I think it's seven, yeah.
And then there'll be a pitch? There'll still be a pitch, like where it ties into the building?
So on the other side of the fence is where the posts for the pergola will be.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
And because they're considered a part of the building structure, they are subjected to that part of the building code as far as height. If, and this is, this is another reason why we couldn't just put the sound curtain up. That was another, we really explored that because I felt like that could be an immediate, let me just put the sound curtain up. If the sound curtain was constructed in absence of the pergola, the height of the posts for the sound curtain don't meet code because then it would fall under the purview, from my understanding, would fall under the purview of a fence. And the fence has those height restrictions. And obviously, if I can't get higher than my fence, I can't, I can't capture sound that's going over the fence.
So, so it'll be like this, and then it'll be like this, tie into the building, right?
Off of the fascia of the building, and then it pitches down.
And this is what you call a pergola up here?
Mm-hmm.
That's made out of metal?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And that's going to open up?
It has, it has a louvered, louvered roof, correct.
And does that have any sound qualities?
No, like I said, they're, they don't really concern themselves with sound. That's not what the pergola company does. But what the acoustic companies that we've worked with are saying is that it's giving us, now we have a structure. Right now, I don't mean to sound crass, I can't hang sound panels from the sky. So what they're saying is this is going to create a space where if the exterior sound curtain doesn't work, I can now have a structure that I can place additional sound dampening baffles.
Oh, so the baffles that open up will be?
I can, I can, in essence, attach additional soundproofing to the undercarriage of that if position one is the sound curtain works. But this is, we've tried to position ourselves because I don't want to put, I want this plan to be able to evolve. If when we get it constructed and we get the sound curtain to the south side up, if there are still complaints of sound from the neighbors, I want to be able to continue to address that, and I want to make sure that this plan gives me the opportunity to do that.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems to me that it's going to take away, I mean, some, you know, I've actually been out there on that patio. I've been there to meet you, with you and stuff. And it seems like, you know, the more you think about all of this, what you're doing, it's going to take away from the whole.
I couldn't agree more.
Right. I mean, it's going to take, but I don't know, like, I learnt a lot about sound when I built the hotel down in Point Judith.
Right.
Because it's a tight area.
Yeah.
You know, I learnt about rubber and, you know, how it absorbs sound and, you know, how sound transfers.
We had, yeah, we had mentioned that.
You know, I just, you know, I hate to think that you're going through this, you know, you know, exercise and, you know, because you have such a beautiful atmosphere there that maybe glass is something that you should be thinking about instead of sound panels that are 14 feet high. It's like, I don't know, like, people are going to want to even be out there then, you know?
It's a concern of ours.
Yeah.
It really, really is a concern of ours.
Yeah.
I feel as though I'm not in a position, standing before you and standing in front of my neighbors, where I can put my design preference of the rear of that building above my neighbors' comfort.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's obviously just too close, that's all, you know?
Yeah, and I think that if I was to do this all over again, would I, I don't know. I can't say I would have enclosed the back patio from the start because it was designed to have that outdoor space. We did a lot of market analysis, and, you know, we're lifelong industry people. We did so much of what do you want to see? What is missing from other businesses? Hours of operation was one of them. Live music was another, a place to watch a football game. We haven't had that since we had Charlie O's. So I feel like all of the components that have made Boone Street Market what it is was feedback from the community, feedback from industry people, feedback from other restaurant owners. So this was, this was a space that was designed intentionally, and to just enclose it now doesn't financially seem feasible. But again, if the pergola doesn't work, it, there are other options on the table. This seems to be, believe it or not, this seems to be the most straightforward approach that allows us to continue to implement different options if it doesn't give us the reduction that we're being told it will.
Yeah.
And it allows us to maintain a lot of my staff and my overall business model as it, as it was designed.
Yeah, because I remember Charlie O's very well because I lived out in the town and went there quite a bit. I remember the deck, you know, over the, and the people complaining.
Yeah.
Charlie, you know, put a canvas top and eyes and glass walls, just like, kind of like on a boat, you didn't have on a boat.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was done pretty quickly, and it did solve the problem, but he didn't have the amount of noise that, you know.
And the amount of linear feet we have back there, it's a very, it's a huge building. So anything that really needs to make a difference, it's a huge, huge process. It's a, it's a big undertaking, and I don't shy away from, you know, from big development, and this is, it's a big project.
Yeah.
And I think when I went into it, I don't think I fully appreciated all of the ins and outs. And being in a mixed use, everything is a special use permit, you know? So it naturally is a longer journey to get from, you know, application and finished product.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know the questions to ask because I don't know what we're going to do here as far as, like, I have.
Well, maybe, do you have any questions regarding any of the proposals that were made this evening? Like, for instance, I know, I actually forgot your last name.
Jack McGree.
Thank you. Mr. McGree had mentioned that you had, you were going to express your feedback regarding some of the limitations or the ability to address the possibility of closing, closing off the entire south side entirely.
Yeah.
So I was just wondering if you could just give a sound bite on that?
Of course, and I think that it's a good segue to clarify a couple of things that were really emphasized from a few of my neighbors. I think there's a bit of confusion regarding how we got here in regards to numbers. So to clarify, the fire, the fire marshal gives me my building's So, to clarify, the fire, the fire marshal gives me my building's occupancy. That's not based on seating, and I'm sorry, I know I'm probably telling the five of you what, something that you know, but just to kind of on record clarify yet again, the Kevin Tuttle and the fire marshal gives me my building's capacity. That's based on, there's a lot of math involved with it, and it has to do with guest-facing square footage versus employee back of the house. And it's a math ratio that doesn't care how we feel. It's, it's a number that is given to me. That number is the, the 400 and change number that everybody is, is touting and was, and was referencing in regards to my seating plan. My seating plan and in turn my parking, that's where the parking number comes from. So, that is something that can be adjusted based on how you choose to develop your restaurant. So, those numbers are very drastic. And it's just like, if you go into any banquet hall or into any, any building, you will see a capacity, and that capacity number usually is very far off from what your, you know, the seating plan is. I am accountable to the zoning ordinances that are put in front of me. And that ordinance in regards to parking has to do with seating and not overall fire capacity numbers. Again, that's not my opinion, that's legal advice and zoning ordinance interpretation. Now, that brings me to the unique challenges that Boone Street Market presents in regards to patron capacity. It is not a traditional restaurant with seated sections and a hostess that's bringing you and seating you down. That's one of the best things about it. It's this living, breathing thing, and everybody's moving around. And a lot of people will sit down around a fire pit that don't even know each other. So, it is a very unique seating and just style of service. What that does is it makes it very difficult to close one aspect or one, I'm sorry, one portion of the building and not have it directly affect the others because this is a moving capacity and a, in essence, breathing, ever-changing. You know, you can go out to the back patio and sit down and say hi to your friend, and then you can go inside and you can pick up your pizza, and then you can sit down at a completely different seat. So, if there, you know, I heard some of the, the comments about, you know, closing down at 9 o'clock. If I close my rear patio at 9 o'clock, and let's say it's a, let's say it's 4th of July weekend, and my back patio is at capacity, operationally, it's extraordinarily difficult to select the hundreds of people, get them to pay their tabs, use the bathroom so they're not peeing in my neighbor's yards, and safely exit the building without this mass exodus of people. I don't have a full capacity at midnight. I have a full capacity at 9 o'clock at night. In the summer, it's not dark yet. So, it's very difficult, and it, what makes me so terrified standing before you is all of the little changes that we've made to make it safer. The police detail, the parking, the Uber pickups, extra security, all of these little changes that have resulted in tangible change. I meet with Chief Rekis regularly. I know that arrests are down, I know that calls are down. And I am so afraid that if we close the back patio when we're at capacity, it is going to become an operational nightmare to get that many people out of the building that quickly. It, it feels like it makes it less safe, and it feels like it's going to be more of a problem for my neighbors. When we close at 1 o'clock in the morning, the majority of the people at the back of the patio are coming inside to close their tabs, they're coming inside to order their Ubers, they're coming inside to use the restrooms. There is significantly less people on the, on the back part of the building the closer you get to close. And I'm very, very weary that if, you know, significant operational, you know, significant hours of operation are reduced back there, that it's gonna become a logistical nightmare to get everybody out in a quick fashion. It's a very unique problem to Boone Street. Like I said, we have a lot of seasoned restaurant industry people, and we've all been kind of coming together with different ways that we could, you know, navigate these kind of problems. I'm just, I don't want to make more of an issue in the neighborhood. I feel like we could potentially be helping with sound and then hurting with how many people. I worry about Ubers being able to keep up if there's this, you know, mass exodus when the building's at capacity. So, those are just some operational considerations that I would really like you guys to be mindful of. Because it really does affect how I'm able to institute these changes that are asked of me, if that's the, the path that you go.
And it was also mentioned, I think, I don't, I think you may have mentioned that you rent additional parking?
Yes, so in the peak season between Memorial Day and Labor Day, I rented the old Marcos, I don't, what is it? I can't remember the address off the top of my head, the lot on the corner right there, that we used as a valet overflow for, just to try to, again, get as many cars off of Boone Street as we could, also to try to help with the parking during, you know, basketball times. We have a lot of parents that will go to their kid's basketball game and then end up at Boone Street. We've been kind of letting them park on Boone Street and then walk across. We've, you know, that extra lot was helpful. I think one of the, you know, the other things that helped with, with parking was the employee shuttle, which was a nice partnership with the Coast Guard House and, and myself to, to just try to help get as many of the employees off-street parking as possible.
Thank you, and thank you for that initiative and supporting that initiative with the Coast Guard House. I do want to share that Council, Councilor Vignali and I actually did a little undercover work ourselves. I don't know if it was July or August, but it was a very busy Saturday. And we, it was actually Councilor Vignali's idea to hop on the shuttle.
You did?
And we rode around a little bit, but it was a good opportunity to speak with some of the staff from Coast Guard House and Boone Street Market. And again, I think, at least with what we learned, first and foremost, is that you, both establishments have amazing staff, best staff, and very happy to have them serving the community. I'm not gonna speak for Councilor Vignali's experience, but at least when I went into Boone Street, I was, the one thing that I was a bit alarmed by was by how piercing loud the music was at that time. I, I've gone there enough times to know that it was very unusual. And my concern was that is the music being intentionally increased indoors to then have the music come out through the side windows or the doors? Because I did, I did notice there was also a concern from having walked around the, the neighborhoods in that area as well, that, you know, there are, it's not just music that's the concern, it's loud people like myself.
My wife is so loud.
If we, you know, if, if we have a few drinks, or a couple, or even one, that, you know, you get chit-chatty, and everyone has different limits. And I know that's extremely difficult and downright impossible to be able to understand everyone's individual limits. But when it's an outdoor setting, it does provide a unique situation and a concern and a very recognizable concern to residents in the immediate area.
Absolutely.
And even doing a perimeter walk around the neighborhoods late in the evening, I think it was after 11:00 PM, the loudest noise came from, just again, the, the ambient noise of people outdoors who had no sense of an inside voice, because why would they? They're outside.
They're outside.
And, you know, I was, I was very surprised, and then, you know, going up like some of the side streets, just, and again, this is not any slap on the wrist at all. This is just recognizing and acknowledging some of these many concerns. And, you know, going up the side, and not only was it that, it was the cornhole banging of the bags between 11 and 1. Again, I'm part of the problem, I too have, have done that. But, you know, I think in order for me to have been able to get a better grasp of the concerns that are being shared was to see it from both sides and to live it myself, so.
The noise from cornhole is a real problem, and it's actually one of the reasons that the relief that we're asking for planning and zoning actually includes an overage on lot coverage. It would be very easy for me to shrink the size of the pergola and allow me to fall under that percentage that's allowed. To do so leaves the cornhole area very vulnerable, and I think it's not a malicious thing. A lot of times, you know, it, it's, it could be a problem in the middle of the day when younger kids get playing. Again, they're outside, they might have just left the park, they're in outside mode, you know? So, that, that cornhole area is one of, it's really a big draw for the kids, everybody loves it. But it definitely is a source of sound in that back patio. And I feel like that was a huge sticking point with me and the perimeters of the, the size of the pergola. And that covering cornhole, I'm glad that you, you brought that up. Covering cornhole is a huge objective of mine. That was actually one of Seth's comments, is Lindsay, we don't have to ask for a building law overage if we just shrink this pergola by one post. And then it just leaves that so vulnerable, and I don't want this to be a 75% solution. I want this to be our best foot forward. Because by the time it's up, everybody's gonna be more than out of patience. So, we really are trying to position ourselves to capture as much sound as we can.
Thank you. And again, I just want to be completely honest with you, as I've tried to be this evening, is that, again, I, I do acknowledge and respect and appreciate the efforts that your establishment has done and the actions that you've shared this evening, as well as, you know, the tremendous business that Boone Street Market has brought to this town, especially into that area. I remember, you know, one of the things we often heard about was the revitalization of Boone Street. And in many ways, I think this has done so. At the same time, I do share and echo my concerns that, you know, I do appreciate the, all of the effort that's going into this and the soundproofing. It's the unknown timeline. And acknowledging that the residents who have come here exhaustively, as well as the entire town, I think, is just wanting to move past this, I think collectively. I do, again, acknowledge and empathetic to the fact that I think you and the residents in the area were given some very lousy hands by the vetting that was done previously, if I'm being honest. And this is no intentional dig at the previous council or planning board members. I just think that there were a lot of pieces to this equation that led to us being where we are today. And I think if conversations and the right questions were asked in the past, the proper vetting, things would have been a lot different, and we'd have the best model that we know that we can have. Because in full transparency, you know, having gone to Boone Street Market and have had plenty of experiences at other establishments around the state, and, you know, anytime I go on vacation, you guys really did do your research. It's a, it's a luxury in the town. There's a lot of really tremendous things there. Again, my, still same grievance is I was very surprised to find that there was only one toilet in the men's room. And again, I know that after, after doing the research was, that was what was permitted to you?
That's what I was.
I was very surprised by that, and I appreciate the added effort of getting those external facilities attached. But again, my, I just want to be very honest with you that my decision this evening, or at least how I'm approaching this, is more so of the current situation that we now find ourselves in and all of the considerations that have been shared this evening.
Of course.
So, does anyone, I know I took up a little bit of airtime here, but I'm looking to both sides. Does anyone have any questions or comments before the council has the opportunity to converse?
Thank you for coming tonight. You had mentioned that you're, you're at capacity at 9 o'clock, but you're not at capacity at 12 o'clock. At what point does that start to dip to reach a, a safe point in which people may be able to exit safely?
So, I'm gonna answer that generally, I think we can lump, this time of year, I think we can lump my answer Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I think that was echoed by my neighbors, those seem to be the loudest days. Obviously, if the pats are on Sunday night, it's gonna be louder that Sunday night than, you know, another. I think that it really, the back patio and the building in general really starts to die back around 11, 11:30. I feel like that very rarely are we even approaching capacity at that time. And that's when we, you know, believe it or not, and it's a weird phenomenon that we're all trying to wrap our head around, the college-aged crowd are starting to come out at like 7 o'clock at night. I, I know that if anybody can remember their college days, that was, that's an anomaly. That's not something that we've seen as a trend in the industry before. And one great part about that is that they're leaving earlier. So, I do feel that 11:30 time is when people are getting their Ubers, closing their tabs, using the bathroom, making plans for their next stop.
And that's for this time of the year?
I just feel like that's for my peak, my peak nights, and I think that, you know, obviously when.
Including summer months, July, August, June?
What was that?
Including summer months, July, August, June?
Yeah, I, I would say summer, summer on a Friday is certainly busier than an October Friday. But I think, I think for the most part, those time trends are, are holding.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, sorry, I'm gonna jump in real quick on that point that you just made about them at 7 o'clock, because I noticed that myself. It's very strange.
It's very strange.
Do you, do you find it happens mostly on a Saturday?
I'm, we're finding, we're finding it with Thursday night when we have a, a stronger URI presence, that they're, they're coming earlier. And I think by the nature of those social groups, they come in, in larger numbers. So, I think we're seeing, we've actually even had to modify our security staff's check-in time because it's, it's, they're showing up earlier and earlier, which in theory gets them out the door earlier, which is a benefit to all of us.
I just wanted to go through some numbers with Jim and with you here.
Sure.
So, it seems like arrests are down quite a bit this year? And so are liquor incidents and noise complaints, is that what I'm seeing?
I'm gonna defer to the report that I gave to you and the police chief.
That's what I'm reading right here.
testify on it, yeah. And they're more intimately aware of all the specific details of those questions, so he's here if you need to answer them.
Can?
Good evening. I do. Chief Kyle Rekis, K-Y-L-E, the last name is R-E-K-A-S.
So, I guess my question for you is just a general rundown of incidents at Boone Street? And how has it happened, how, what's been going on for the last year?
So, arrests are down. In 2024, there were 13, in 2025, there have been three. There was one liquor incident in which, that was August of 2024, which the police department went to every liquor establishment. And Boone Street Market and one other liquor establishment failed a compliance check, which means they did serve alcohol to underage people. That was in dress, addressed by the previous administration with the owners of both places, and no one was charged. And in regards to noise, we have taken a lot of noise readings. A lot of those readings are below, but there are many that are above. We have not cited Boone Street Market. I've talked to Mr. Callahan, I've talked to Mr. Tierney, and I think the ordinance does need some attention. There's something in the ordinance that says the noise needs to be continued or continuous. The noise we're seeing, or my offices that are in detail, is not continuous, it's more spikes. And some of those spikes are going over the limit. As for some of the readings, we took 31 readings. As for some of the readings, we took 31 readings at 161 Boon Street, 16 of those were over, so that's a pretty good percentage. On Thursday night, I walked around the neighborhood, and if you have to ask what the issue is, it is noise. Even when the noise levels are not above, you can still hear continuous talking, bar noise, whatever you want to call it. Anything else?
I know, I just wanted a rundown on that, thank you very much.
And now, sir?
Question, chief. In your opinion, you say that the ordinance could use some looking at, what would help you make this a little more enforceable?
I actually spoke to the chief in Newport today, who obviously deals with a lot of these problems. At one point, they took the wording out that made it constant and continuous. And if you get a chance, if you read the Newport, City of Newport's noise ordinance, it is very easy to enforce and very easy to understand.
Thank you.
Chief, so the details that are there, those are Narragansett officers, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Are there other security officers at that establishment, or is it always just Narragansett Police?
Well, Boon Street does have their own security, but it's Narragansett Police, yes.
Okay.
There are two officers there every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night. That is paid not by tax dollars, that is paid by Boon Street Market.
Yeah, and, yeah, no, I assume they paid it. So is it not a policy for police officers to walk by themselves, or do they need to be together? Like, for instance, like, I know, like, a lot of the complaints from the neighbors are things that happen, like, on the sidewalks or up and down the areas where, like, say, from Boon Street to South Pier Road, say, and then, like, from Boon Street to, like, maybe Rodman Street, that kind of, that seems to be the hot zone, you know? And are they able to walk by themselves without another officer?
They are. When we discussed the detail with Mr. Tierney and Boon Street Market, it was decided that Boon Street Market paid for two officers. So at times they are together, at times they're walking around separately.
So it's okay, it's not protocol, they have to be together, they can walk up and down those cars?
Sometimes the detail is only filled by one officer, yes.
Yeah. Do you think there's enough security there between yourselves being stationed and whatever security? I've never seen the other security, I don't, I don't know who they are, do they wear jackets or?
It would be employees from Boon Street Market.
Yeah, right. So they probably wear jackets that say "security."
Shirts or some type of, yeah, sweatshirt.
Yeah, right. Do you think there's enough there that, because it just seems like there's a lot of issues, you know, and it's a lot of noise and a lot of people and stuff, so is it, is it a...
You can never have enough security.
Yeah.
But I don't know how much physical security will take care of a noise issue.
Right. Yeah, I know what you mean by the noise, because I'll drive by there, like, if we're at a wedding and we're out that late at night, we don't stay out that late that much anymore. But, you know, when we do go by there, it just seems to me that it's just, you know, it's like, it's like just the amount of people having fun is just creating this, like, you know, this whole noise issue, and then you hear somebody yell, "Ah!" you know, and it's like, you know what I mean? It's just like, it's just so annoying, I guess, if you're in your backyard trying to have a glass of wine.
So like I said, Boon Street has been receptive with their security, and they've done some things that we've asked them, which has helped somewhat. But again, all the security in the world is not going to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not going to help noise.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, not of the chief, though.
Oh, yeah, no, just in general, though, I appreciate the feedback on the noise ordinance issues. Honestly, it's a huge red flag, honestly, for this whole town to, again, it was one thing that was very eye-opening for me, and probably for the rest of the council to come in and find out how many ordinances are on our books, but the roadblocks that need to be overcome to enforce these ordinances on the books. So I appreciate that feedback, and, you know, I'd actually welcome Counselor Tori Alda, if he wants to co-sponsor the noise ordinance updates, I'd be more than happy to collaborate on that.
I'll do that.
Okay, cool. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chief, I want to thank you for preparing that report for you and your staff to provide to the council, and I know it took a lot of work, appreciate it.
Okay, Counselor McNally, you said you had questions, comments?
I just, I just want to clarify, so this capacity thing is just absolutely...
Oh, who would you like to direct this to?
I'll direct it to anyone who...
Okay.
So there's a winter capacity, there's a summer capacity, there's a indoor capacity, there's an outdoor capacity, there's a fire capacity, it's very, very confusing. I know. So I have all these circles here, so I, hopefully I get the right information. But, so I believe my understanding is that we'll just take one, we'll just take the winter or the summer, we won't go with both of them.
So the previous council tasked us with something that was never asked of another business owner or restaurant owner in the town in Narragansett. They asked us to file a winter and a summer plan, which we did do. And then we had to, which further complicated things, we then had to arrive at what our parking burden was for those two plans. Now, the most sensical approach was to use the summer plan, which had more seats, and have that be the guiding number for our parking variance. Now, from a fire capacity perspective, they assign, based on kind of what I alluded to before, you know, your area of your floor plan, they give you, give different parts of the building different fire capacities. If you start kind of looking around when you're in different buildings, you'll see different, you know, areas that will give you different, you see it in, like, the school system, where the cafeteria has one fire capacity, and then a classroom has another fire capacity. And just, but then, just like in one of the schools, the whole entire school or restaurant has a total capacity. That total capacity, from an operational standpoint, is supposed to be our guiding principle. That's how many people were clicking in and how many people were clicking out. Oh, of course.
Council President, do you mind if we take a quick recess?
Oh, sure, I think I should have taken the note when Counselor Tori Alda got up just a second ago. So, yeah, we'll take a brief recess, five minutes or so. Thank you.
In the public hearing, very welcome. Thank you for everyone's patience. And where were we? Sorry.
I think we were in the middle of talking.
Asking questions?
Talking, yeah, that, no, talking about the capacity, winter versus summer capacity.
Capacity.
Okay. Thank you. And was there a specific council that we were on, were we on you? Okay.
Okay, so we were just talking about the capacity and how it's very complicated. But I think I was able to figure this out. So, and I'm just going to use winter for an example. It says 69 seating. This is inside with an occupancy of people who could stand at 121. And seating outside would be 52 with 129 people. So that the total would be 397 within the entire.
Is that including occupancy on the, the north patio? I'm sorry, my brain spread. The north patio, there's a, oh, you're talking about for the winter plan? No, you're correct.
Yeah, I was just, I was just taking what I have here. And I believe that would be with the winter plan.
In the summer, there's the additional occupancy on the north patio.
Okay, all right. So, so it seems to me that the difference between summer and winter is 413 versus 397.
Correct, it's very, it's marginal.
So the north doesn't have that many of an occupancy then?
No, no.
Okay, all right. So I was wondering why there was a discrepancy in summer and winter? I didn't quite understand that.
Yeah, and it was, it was something that the previous council asked of me, and I just wanted to be transparent and work towards that. The only problem then came with the, what number we were going to use for the parking variance. And that was obviously calculated off of the, the larger of those two.
Okay, so then if in fact, we just say for instance, just a scenario that outside was closed at an earlier time than what the inside is allowed to be opened. So you would have, the outside would be 52 seating, 129. So you would then just have to go by the occupancy for the inside, is that correct?
Correct. If I was closing that exterior patio, I would have to then subtract that.
Subtract that amount, which would take you to.
We would have to physically get all of those people clicked out because we have rolling occupancies at our entrances and exits.
Okay, so just, I guess my point is, and just something that I've been tossing around, is that you would have about 129 people who would be leaving at a different time than the rest, so that when, there'll be less people leaving the building at 1 o'clock. So they would be less dispersment within the coming out at one time. And that's just what I was playing around with, that, you know, the neighbors would not have to deal with a large, huge amount of people coming out at one time versus people leaving at a, at a different time.
Actually, I appreciate your train of thought. I actually think the converse is true because if we close earlier, we have more people on that back patio. As the night goes on, there, people start to disperse and there's less people out in the back. You know, at 8 o'clock, there's less people, I'm not going to say as far as decibels and tolerable noise, that is completely separate from what I'm saying. I'm talking about just from a numbers perspective. There are less people in the entire building, let alone just on the rear patio at midnight, than there is at 9 o'clock. So 9 o'clock makes those early hours, I'm not saying anybody's saying 9, those early hours become a very difficult operational obstacle to select. If it was just seated, that's one thing, to, we could say, okay, you've got to pay your tab and go. But with this rolling, you know, inside-outside occupancy that I described earlier, that becomes, the more people I have to displace, I feel the more safety and just security and operational issues that present in my mind.
Okay, fair enough. So you're saying 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock is when it's really, really busy?
Yeah.
And then it starts to dwindle down?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that, you know, for whatever reason, that 11:30 mark, that 11, the difference between 10:30 and 11:30 is, it's a big difference.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments before we deliberate? I know I had a question and I just completely lost it. Oh, thank you.
Give you some thinking time.
Alex, you still have one gentleman raise his hand to speak earlier.
Oh. No, that's all right. We're still in open forum, so I'll still be able to ask if anyone else has any other comments before. So, thank you.
So, the, would, would you ever think of, and I don't even like asking this question, but would you ever think of voluntarily reducing the occupancy on the south deck until this pergola situation gets corrected? Like, would that be something that would?
I feel reducing occupancy is obviously a reduction in, in income and tips to my staff. I don't think that, you know, that's not something I would consider lightly. I do recognize I'm before you trying to compromise and trying to come up with, even if it was a temporary solution.
You know, and, and I think I'm thinking temporary only because I do think, I actually think you're trying. I think it's taken too long to.
For sure, I agree.
Come through and, you know, it's a bunch of things, but, you know, I think that it's taken too long. So there's frustration up here and, you know, there's frustration around here. And just thinking, would that solve half the problem with the noise? If you had less people there until this thing is built? You know?
I know, I completely understand where you're coming from, and I think that's actually a unique idea. I think people have been talking a lot about hours of operation, but not so much about a capacity. I think one thing that, that still would concern me is with a reduction in, in occupancy, there's still people out there making noise. So I don't know if that would be a solution for my neighbors. I think you also have to consider, especially now, we are not at capacity. Maybe for a couple of hours on Thursday night. Other than that, capacity is really, it does happen in the summer, not going to lie. We hit capacity often in the summer. Right now, it's really, I, I don't know if that would have a tangible change to the neighbors. And the last thing I want to do is have it be a solution I agree to that I don't think is going to make a difference. I think we're just not having that many people consistently out there. So if we were to say, like, if I was to say I'm going to reduce my capacity by 75 people, just throwing a number out there. If I, if I'm never at capacity, you're never going to appreciate that reduction in people. And I think it's going to be a hard change to actually track. And I think one of the things I've been trying to do, I don't know if it's the former nurse in me, all of these interventions, I want to be, I want to be able to track the change in them. Which is why, believe it or not, I was asking my neighbors when there are issues, particularly when it comes to people like coming into their property and things like that, to call the police. So I can track, you know, I have this metric in numbers of calls to dispatch, so I can track the change to see if it's working. We were throwing so many solutions out at one point, it was hard to see what was helping and what wasn't. So I just don't want to agree to a reduction in occupancy if that's not going to produce a change. I think that it, I mean, ultimately, you know, what compromises I'm presented with is obviously entirely up to you. So I don't want to discredit that as a, as an idea. I just worry that if I have just a handful less people out on the back, there's still going to be issues in regards to, to sound, until this pergola is up. But I, I'm open to, to suggestions.
Did the sound engineers, you know, it, like, I, I sometimes, like, when I drive by there at night and it's loud, you know, I wonder like, why is it so loud sometimes? You know? Have you ever investigated the idea of the building itself being a, like, the creation of the noise? Like, is it, like, is it, it's very.
We, we have talked about that. We've tried to ascertain like the quality of sound. It doesn't seem like it's a mechanical thing, which could be like insulating equipment and things like that. It seems to be, you know, a patron sound. And we've made a lot of changes to the, the music, the decibels of the music, the not doing any live music outside. We even had our mechanical engineers work on our air conditioning unit to try to increase, we have such a huge volume of air in the building. And a lot of times in the summer, they were opening the windows because the AC wasn't keeping up because of everybody coming in and out. Just really was stressing the AC system. So we were presented with a couple of possible changes for that, so we could kind of keep the windows closed in the summer and prevent some of the sound from escaping.
I actually think, I think I talked to you about this the other day, like, a, what do they call it?
Oh, like the little vestibules? Yeah.
So where you open one door, the other door is there to absorb the sound and it keeps the AC in and.
For sure. I think that, I don't want to speak for Brandon, but I think the, one of the things that his response to that was that he was hoping that that's what the pergola in itself would, would in essence be doing. So I think that was.
I just, you know, I just, you know, I just know a lot of people like the place. I'm just trying to think of things that can make everybody happy, that's all.
No, for sure. And we, we didn't spare any time, energy, or expense when we restored the building, following all of the necessary R ratings as far as insulation goes. Spared no expense for the rating of our windows and, and whatnot. So I am confident in, you know, the building being constructed, maybe I'm biased for the building being constructed the way that it was. Now is there more opportunity that we can continue to, to explore more soundproofing options? Absolutely. For me, it's just this, getting this pergola and the sound curtain up was, was objective number one and hoping, not, like I'm saying, I'm not putting all of my eggs in that basket. We have a Plan B for additional sound curtains, a Plan C for additional sound panels that can be affixed to the pergola structure. But we really are hoping that this structure does address a lot of the concerns that everybody's bringing forth tonight.
Yep, nope. And I forgot, I forgot my question, but I think it was probably answered in this dialogue. So again, I appreciate your opportunity to come up here, and I do know that there was a couple other people who wanted to speak. So I will still give you the opportunity to respond if, because that's what we agreed upon before, if, if you wish to do so. Only if anyone has not already participated in the public hearing, because I do, and I think you all deserved to hear some dialogue come from this council before midnight. So just want to keep that in mind, so, thank you.
I do. Steve Ricciitelli, R-I-C-C-I-T-E-L-L-I, 180 Boone Street. I'll keep it brief, I'm just getting over a cold. I am dumbfounded by the fact that we're still talking about pergolas a year into this. It sounds great, pergolas and curtains, but the issue is more than noise. A pergola and a curtain is not going to help with the unruly behavior outside of my house at 12:45 and 1 o'clock in the morning. For example, when I get woken up by cars racing up and down the road in the middle of the night, I don't need to look at my cell phone anymore to figure out what time it is. I know it's around 12:45. So I think it's time for action. I think we've had enough discussion on this. The data is there. You know, the other comment that I'll make is, I didn't like the way tonight was run. I thought it was divisive, this side versus that side. I think it perpetuates that us versus them mentality. So I think it's just time to move on from the pergola. Listen, if it hap, if it happens, great, but it may not happen. So you need to take action based upon the information that you have before you tonight, not what might happen or not a year down the road. So enough talk, it's time for action. Pergolas and curtains, listen, I'd love to have a curtain in front of my house from 11 o'clock until 1:30 in the morning, so I don't have to be subjected to all the stuff that happens in my neighborhood. And college students going out at 7 o'clock at night, I invite anybody to come to my house because I'm surrounded by college rentals, and you can see them walking down the street at 10 o'clock at night. I know where they're going. They're going to Boone Street Market. They're not leaving the house at 7 o'clock at night, maybe in Metta Tuxit, maybe in Petasquamsket, maybe in other neighborhoods in Narragansett. But let me tell you, that's not my experience. And I really think it's important that everybody respects everybody's experience. At the last public hearing that we had, you had people coming up going, I go there, I love it there. I think Boone Street Market is fine. My kids go there. That's not the issue. Having people go there and have parties that, you know, for their family, they're not the problem. If you're there at 1 o'clock in the morning, but your six-year-old DCYF should be at your house, okay? house, okay, you're not the problem. The problem is the college students, the unruly behavior that happens, right? So the other issue is, I really don't think that other people's opinions matter unless you're directly impacted by Boone Street Market. So you can have people come from the north part of town and say, hey, what a great place it is. But do they really have any standing on this issue? This isn't a popularity contest. This isn't an indictment against Lindsay. Seems like a very nice person. I met with her over the summer. Our kids go to school together. So again, we have to be respectful of everybody's experiences. It's not an indictment against Boone Street Market, it's not an indictment against Lindsay, but something needs to be done. The hours of operation, amending them is the only solution to the issues, because again, it's not just noise. So I think it's time to move on from the pergola, let's move on from the curtain, take some decisive action, have the courage to take some decisive action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, I do. My name is John Hanley, J.O.H.N., H.A.N.L.U.Y. So a couple of observations from listening to this. And the people spoke of it too before, is that it's two things that I've been talking about, other issues in town, but it's a different issue, but the same thing. It's about balance in the neighborhoods and quality of life, very simply, A to Z. The other thing that I would say is, believe it or not, before I retired, I was a, I'll say, quite a good engineer. And I know you got a structural guy here, and the lady said they had contracted acoustic engineers to do some sort of analysis. And I believe, both of you, believe it or not, you asked good questions, about what was the predicted sound reduction. And I believe the answer was between 4 and 14 dB, is that what you said? Between 10 and 14 dB. And if I look at that and listen to the gentleman who had all the readings that he took, I guess I would say, why didn't you come up with an initial design approach that was between 15 and 25 dB? To make sure you're gonna solve the problem before you spend a half a million dollars, and we're a year down the road and we're sitting here saying the same thing. I mean, that's what I would do as an engineer. I mean, I used to do a lot of design reviews, and you got to ask the questions, and you got to ask, oh, why aren't you doing this? You know, you really should. They used to say, you only get one bite at the apple. Well, you should have taken a big bite and have a design that gets it down to where people aren't gonna complain. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Todd Williams, T.O.D.D.W.I.L.L.I.A.M.S., South Pear Road. Thank you for letting me speak with you this late at night. But I just want to give thought to the two issues that we're having here that are, you know, affecting a good percent of the Narragansett residents, and it's a serious offense, you know what I mean, that they're having troubles at their own home. And eventually, what's gonna happen is, it's gonna catch up to everybody, I think, if you're not having a problem right now, because where the mouth will get out? If I was a business owner with a real good business, I'm gonna have a second thought of bringing my business here, because I got a couple issues in this town. Wouldn't you look at that? If you were gonna open up a business and bring it into here, that's a good a business? Or somebody with a lot of knowledge and that can bring opportunity to this place? I'm not gonna come here. Or, you know, think twice about coming here. So we're gonna lose maybe that, you know? Now, the reason being, you know, if I go to a restaurant, it's a real good restaurant this season, and what happens is I come back next season and I got this serious odor that really stinks. Am I gonna sit down in that restaurant? You know, you're gonna lose that business now, right? Because now it's a real serious odor that's affecting me enjoying myself at this restaurant. So now you're gonna lose business out of that. And also, too, if I get a district that I'm wanting to purchase a home in, I'm not gonna look at that, or you buy something in a district that's having a problem, and this odor is, you know, a certain perimeter right now, and if that perimeter doesn't get addressed, it's just gonna get bigger. And eventually, you might have this odor in your district. So we really have to, you know, do something about this before these happen, because also this district, if I was gonna buy in this district, I'm not gonna buy because it has an issue that's not being resolved. So what's gonna happen? To get people to buy, you're gonna have to lower the property value in order for someone to buy. Now, what happens if the property value gets lowered, and I don't have people coming to my business anymore because of their stench? What's gonna happen is the town's not gonna get tax money. The amount of tax money that they're getting now, they're gonna get extra tax money. And also, the value of houses is gonna come down a little bit, because I'm thinking, why am I gonna go here? I got two issues in the town. So, you know, issues are made to be addressed and resolved, and let's resolve this right to keep the beauty, the wealth, and the value of Narragansett high. Thank you for letting me explain that to you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken this evening wishes to do so? Yes.
Yes, I do. Sydney Broylard, Sydney, S.Y.D.N.E.Y.B.R.O.U.I.L.L.A.R.D. Hi, I will keep this super short. My name is Sydney, and I live at 145 Boone Street in Apartment 3. I thought, after hearing everyone's commentary tonight, I just wanted to come up here and say that, you know, I live closer to Boone Street Market than every single person in this room. I'm not saying that drunk people on the streets are not a problem. I cannot attest to that portion of the complaint, but what I can attest to is the music and the noise, and that it's livable, and it's tolerable, and it's really not that loud, and that everyone is up here just complaining about change, and the change in Narragansett, and the change in this neighborhood. And before we take jobs away from people, and before we change the way that these people who are employed at Boone Street live their lives, and other people in our community, I would urge the town council to let them see if this solution works. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Robert Mongillo. I do. Robert Mongillo, M.O.N.G.I.L.L.O. There's a simple solution to this. If they close at 10 o'clock tonight, or whenever their license is up, they'll have all the time in the world to design this pergola. There's no guarantees. It's very difficult to stop sound, especially the bass that comes out of that place. And nobody's counting for the motorcycles that come out, and, oh, God, it's unbelievable. So after they put this pergola up, whenever, see if it works. If it works, then they come back and they reapply. Very simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. Do you have any final response before we? Okay, thank you. So thank you all for your very passionate and exhaustive, and I understand grievances that have been shared. And just to acknowledge, this, of course, is not an easy meeting to run. I did my best to acknowledge both sides. I thought it made sense, and I take full responsibility to hear the voices and representations from Boone Street residents in the immediate area, and then I wanted to hear what the business had to say about actions being made in the response to those concerns. It's not to gaslight or dismiss any of the important voices that have shared their opinion here this evening. I just felt that that was the most organized way in which I could delegate this meeting. So I understand and appreciate that it may, you know, there's always ways to improve it, so I appreciate the feedback. With that being said, I will...
Council President.
Yes.
May I interrupt for one moment?
We're at 11:00.
Before we get, we just need to make a motion to extend. We haven't done that yet, and I just don't want to forget before we end up taking another vote, okay?
Motion to extend the meeting.
Second.
Need discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, it's five zero. Thank you. So I tend to inject my opinion too often before the council has had an opportunity to speak, so I didn't know if any council member voluntarily wanted to speak first, or if you wanted me to kick it off. This is not to call anyone out, I just, I don't mind, I just want to allow you guys the opportunity to speak first if you want to.
Sure, I'll start. You know, I occupy a particular voice in town, that of the youth, and at least I like to, I think I'm still young. There's nothing like Boone Street Market around, and there is no nightlife to speak of around Narragansett or South Kingston. I'm torn in that I want to protect the most interesting new business in town, as I and others enjoy their establishment, but I need to weigh that against the very valid concerns and lived experiences and well-being of the immediate neighbors. We've heard the stories of what it's like to live around Boone Street Market, and to me, it's clear that sound at night is the number one issue. The pergola is a great idea, and I want to see it completed. But here we are, 11 months after this was initially discussed. I've learned just how slowly governmental processes go, but 11 months, a year plus, that's quite a long time for the people in the immediate proximity. Mentioned this earlier, I support amending the noise ordinance and updating it to make it more enforceable and a little more palatable for the people in the immediate surrounding. I'd like to see outdoor music shut off at 10. I would also like interior music to be capped at a certain decibel. I don't know what that is, as I'm not a sound engineer, but I've sat in the area, near the bar, near the TVs, talking to a friend, and I have to yell to, to be heard. So I would support capping that there. Additionally, I don't want to do this, but I would support temporarily reducing the liquor license hours pending completion of the pergola and proven success of said pergola.
Any specifics on time? Are you open to conversation and hearing feedback from the rest of the council first? Obviously, by design here, with Counselor Torellio's pitch here, I'd appreciate hearing everyone on the council's different feedback and opinions on any sort of adjustments that can be made first, and then we can discuss.
Yeah. My thinking was reducing it to 12, or closing the patio at 11:30.
Okay. And again, we're just gonna go through and get everyone's take on first, initial feedbacks, and then we'll discuss, and then we'll come to a consensus. So anything else?
That is all for me at the moment, and that's just pending installation and proven success of the pergola.
Yep, okay. Well, I don't want to go down the line here, but...
I'll jump in, that's fine. I too enjoy Boone Street Market. I'm a musician, some people know, some people don't. Some people don't think I really am, but it's okay. And when I get out of gigging, you know, like, there's only a couple of choices to go and get food at the end of the evening. So as a working person at night, going to Boone Street Market and getting a bite to eat and a drink after a night of music is, it's great for me. The only other places that I can go to are typically ponchos and sometimes Leos if they have extra pizzas sitting around. So I'm a big fan of being able to go in as a working person and grabbing food, and that is something that Ms. Holmes has always suggested is part of their plan, right? So I'm hearing a flavor here, and I guess what I would say is, music off outside at 10 seems reasonable to me. You know, all that off at 10, it seems reasonable to me. But I would, when I listen to Ms. Holmes, she says that she needs time to clear that outside porch, and I too believe that the pergola would be a big solution as well. So if there were any thoughts of a temporary reduction of hours outside, I would go with the 11:30 outside reduction, but I'm all for keeping the inside open until the end of the evening.
Okay. Does anyone oppose if I speak now, or do you guys want to? Okay. So my concern is, of course, again, first and foremost, it's the quality of life. I think it's already been shared this evening by residents in the, everywhere in the surrounding area. Again, even from my own personal experience, walking the neighborhoods in the immediate surrounding area after 11, it was not only music, it was, I think honestly, even louder, it was the people. And again, there's no control, there's no way to control or regulate how someone's gonna act outside, the volume in which they're creating. I mean, if you try to tell me to quiet down, I don't even know if I'd listen. You can throw me out, but that's not gonna solve the problem. Another part of my concern is the liability of people spilling out into the surrounding neighborhoods. Again, I recognize the efforts being made by Boone Street, but at the same time, if the business is open until 1, people are still spilling out into the neighborhoods until 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning. And I know there's no way to control people leaving the establishment upon leaving the premises, but again, I think the root cause of the problem and a big part of the solution is the hours of operation for the business itself. And the reason why I say that is because it's already been shared this evening, just how, many times actually, that it's not a feasible option to be able to regulate the outdoor patio area, that by allowing people to be out there till, you know, 11, 12 o'clock, and then throwing them out, or causing, like, redirecting them to come back inside, just doesn't seem like a feasible option, because it's already been shared, and I agree, that trying to get everyone to pay their bill outside, only for them to go back inside and continue on, is a logistical nightmare, as it's already been shared this evening. And again, I appreciate, I've shared before, and I know that, you know, there's been a discussion about, you know, we're sick and tired of hearing the pergola, but I have to recognize the efforts that are being made, but I don't, again, cards that we're looking at today and the facts are that we don't see the pergola in place. And again, we're here a year later. I don't want to be here a year from now, feeling like we just wasted two years of our time, three years of a really poor quality of life for the residents in the immediate Boone Street area. So for me, and again, I want to acknowledge and appreciate everyone that's come here to speak this evening, but for me, the only way to do this is to compromise on the hours of operation as a whole. And I feel that when we came aboard, we showed that good faith initiative by... And I feel that when we came aboard, we showed that good faith initiative by saying, "All right, we're recognizing residents' concerns, we're going to address what we believe will be the root cause of the problem, and that's the noise in the area." So the recommendation at that time was to, you know, cut off all outdoor music at 9:00 PM, and then all outdoor music and noise gets turned off at 11:00 PM. But it wasn't until I went on a busy Saturday night in July or August, that I realized that it created another problem, where it felt like, whether intentional or not, I'd, I'd give Boone Street the benefit of the doubt on this, but it, from my experience, it seemed like the noise was louder indoors, and every time the windows were open, or the doors were opening, there was a sound leaking out into the area. And so to address the sound and the noise, as well as the problem of people spilling out into the surrounding neighborhoods, and the uniqueness of this mixed-use area, I would propose cutting the hours of operation, two hours to 11:00 PM as a compromise. Now, I know that it's been shared, 9:00, 10:00 PM, I think that's a little extreme under the circumstances, and it's not to say that this can't be revised or amended in the future, but for me, I think it's very important that the quality of life of those in the immediate surrounding area, again, stealing my dialogue, I was going to make the point, that I think we can all agree, especially as a town, the great benefit that a local thriving business is to the town of Narragansett, the publicity everyone's talking about. You go on TikTok or any social media app, all they're doing is talking about Boone Street. But when it comes to the quality of life, and the residents in the immediate Boone Street area, and those that are directly impacted by this decision-making, I think it's very important that we have to take into consideration what happens, what repercussions happen when things don't go according to plan. Even if all the right things, all the right approvals have been put into place, that there are delays outside of our control that need to be taken into consideration. So that is why I'm proposing, because logistically, this seems more feasible, is to revise the hours of operation from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That's my take, so I'll pass it down, and we're not going to debate any one particular proposal yet. I just want to hear the rest of you guys.
Alex, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Just so I understand, are you saying close the entire operation down at 11:00?
Yes, and the reason why.
No, that's okay.
No, yeah, the reason why is, and again, we can debate this after, is that I just feel that a great part of the problem isn't necessarily the noise that's found itself rooted at just Boone Street. It's people like me who will go and leave and be all excited, and have no sense of volume control upon leaving the establishment, and I hear very recognizable concerns of families in the immediate area about, you know, I think it was the last public hearing that we heard families, grandkids coming over to visit, and them being woken up in the middle of the night, because you have people that are just belligerently loud. And I think this is, again, it's a good problem to have, because we see how popular a local business is in the community, but it's a very real issue and concern to the residents and families in the immediate area. And I feel that a year later, I have a little bit more solid footing to be able to provide a bit more of a recommendation on this. So, again, that's my opinion. So, Councilor Durkin.
Yep.
Or Councilor McNally or?
Yeah, so.
And you don't have to speak to what I just said, you can share your own thoughts.
So I think, I think that the closing time that is there now could stay there for the inside bar, but the windows have to be closed. And the outside could be 11:30. And when the people exit the outside, they can't come through the inside, they have to go somehow outside. They can't come back into the building, and then they have to be prepared to leave from the outside, if that's possible. And I, I think that's, you know, I'm sure that's a big, a big bang for the owners of the restaurant, and I hope it helps the residents. I heard 11:00, I heard 11:30, you know, being woken up at 11:30 is not fun, but I think there has to be compromise here, and if it doesn't improve, then it'll get worse, I guess. That's, that's all there is to it, so.
So just so that I'm making my notes clear here, you're saying, what was the 11:30 PM?
The outside.
Outside. And you're saying, and then keep, but I don't, can I just ask a question in regard to, you said windows closed, right? I just want to make sure that's not like a fire hazard or something, that we can't recommend windows be closed, right?
As long as it's not a fire hazard. I'm sure the fire department can tell you, but that would certainly minimize, they're open for a reason, and maybe it's too hot in there, and, you know, I've been.
I don't think there's that many windows anyway. Oh, on the, on the Boone Street side, there's a bunch of windows, right?
Yeah.
Does that close? That does close, it must close, right? But that would, geez, I don't know the answer to that, actually.
If windows can open and shut.
That serves, that bar serves the outside, right? I'm trying to think now. There's a bar inside, and then.
It's on the outside.
It's a double-sided bar, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think you just have to close the windows to the outside.
There's no prohibition, Jim, for you doing that, as long as there's a fire suppression method. And I wouldn't think that open windows would be fire suppression.
I think they sprinkle it in there.
I would, I would, I would hope so, yeah.
But, yeah, I just, I just feel like that's, you know, fair to both sides, hopefully, you know? Yeah.
And again, after this, we'll talk amongst ourselves, it'll be more open conversation. I just want to get a take on everyone, and sorry for going last. It was not intentional.
Oh, no, that's okay, that's fine, that's fine.
That's the best way to go.
Yeah.
First, I, I do think, and I appreciate the fact that Ryan's going to look at, introduce the ordinance, I think that needs to be looked at. I think that's something that we need to take a, a look at and figure out how we can make some improvements with that. I also believe that outside needs, I, I would propose that it would be shut down at 11:00 o'clock. I'm not going to tell anyone how to, you know, have their business model or whatever, but I do believe that creative thinking, it can be done. I think outside could be shut down and, and inside can remain open, and I think that that's something that's very possible. I think the noise inside, and I was with, I was with President Menzies that night, and it was just, the, the music in that building that night was just, when you opened that door, it just screamed out, that music inside needs to be brought down. I, I just think that that has to happen. I can look for my glasses, I thought I could read my notes here. I say we let the pergola happen, and if it works, then we come back and we, we look at everything again, but in the meantime, I know, I for one, and I think I've told many of the residents, I would have a hard time going through what they're going through, and it would be, I mean, you know, I don't know if it's because they're younger and I'm older or whatever, but I would have a very, very difficult time. And I think this is all about compromise, and I think if we could compromise and try to work through this, I think that we can make things good, and hopefully Boone Street could be the best it could be, residents can sleep at night, and we can get through this.
Okay. So now that we've had, heard different pitches from each council member, you know, the floor is open amongst the council to being able to ask questions. I do have a general question since it was brought up by a couple of councillors about the idea of possibly shutting off the outside patio by a certain time. It's already been expressed by the owner of the establishment, that that's a significant challenge and a logistical nightmare. I'm just wondering why continue on with a proposal when that's already been shared?
I believe she said an earlier close was a logistical nightmare.
She said 9:00.
And that a later close would, would be an okay solution.
For outdoors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I think, I think if, with some creative thinking, and I think, Linty's shaking her head, I think she agrees that that probably can be done.
And again, again, the problem is, of course, getting to consensus here, and I think we will. Again, I do share, again, my concerns, is that, yes, I do appreciate the councils, at least the council members who have shared their thoughts about, you know, acknowledging and, and doing something about addressing some of the volume of people going to this establishment, and then, you know, mitigating the noise outside. My concern, though, remains that with a business of this size and capacity, is the concern of the unknown timelines and the unknown of people who are leaving the establishment. So if you have, you know, as it currently stands, you know, we continue to hear the problem, problems about people leaving Boone Street at 1:00 PM, and it doesn't matter if they're inside or outside, they've indulged in some sort of libation, or food, hopefully. But then they're going out into the immediate surrounding area, and I just think the uniqueness of the business model and that area being right in the center of such a quiet, you know, mixed area, and again, I know that this went through a series of vetting. I'm just looking at the current situation that we find ourselves in, and I just, I don't think that addressing just the outdoor noise, and it's just my opinion, I just, I don't think addressing just the outdoor noise at 11:00 PM is going to prevent loud people like myself from leaving the establishment between 11:00 and 2:00. You know, obviously, everyone leaves at 1:00, but like, I could be wandering around for 30, 40 minutes looking for my car and be loud. And again, this is just my concerns. It's, I'm not, this, like, I appreciate.
No, if I could, if I could just, if I could just address, address that and my thoughts behind that, because I.
Sure.
Guess I didn't put my glasses on fast enough, because I missed my little note here. So that evening that we went there, that evening that we were there, and we got on the bus, there was a police cruiser that had two police officers parked right in front of Boone Street, if you recall, and I believe there were security people in Boone Street. My thing is that if you have people leaving at 11:00, okay, people are leaving at 11:00, and you have security people outside, and you have police officers outside, that's a less of a crowd that they have to control that they're going out there. And then at 1:00, that's a lesser of a crowd that those same officers would be able to handle, because it's less people than at 1:00, everybody leaving at the same time. So I think it, it kind of breaks it up so that they, the, the officers and the security have a less amount of people, so that they can get out into the neighborhoods more, they could walk around more, and, and be able to see more people, because there's less people to see. It's just the way I'm seeing it.
And it's, again, and I appreciate you sharing that, and I appreciate the council for allowing me to have this conversation, is, again, my concern is, you know, does the police have the bandwidth to be able to, you know, control a massive number of people leaving the business at that time? I don't disagree that this will have an impact on lowering, and I'm actually empathetic to what this will do to the business, but again, you know, for me, it's, there's also nothing preventing them, as it's already been shared this evening, that, you know, they're not at capacity a lot of the times. So a lot of those people outside could just go inside, because I don't think there's going to be any way to prevent anyone from coming inside when the business is still open till 1:00. So I don't know if it's going to solve so much of a problem.
Well, that's, that's a good point.
But if they're not at capacity on the inside, then they should be allowed to let people come on, on the inside.
Right. I'm not disagreeing with that.
So the capacity on the inside, though, Alex, is only 129, right?
Yeah. So, so, but if, I spoke to the fire marshal, and I asked him, is it possible, I know you cannot lock a door, you cannot lock a door from inside going out, but he did tell me that you can lock people out from coming in, so if that back door was locked, preventing people from coming in at 11:00 o'clock, people would have to leave if they threw the outside, and if they want to return into Boone Street, they would, A, walk in through the front door, or if there's a line, get in line and go in to the regular part, if it's not to capacity. So I mean, I think, like I said, I think creative, if you, if, if you sit down and really think about it, it really can be figured out in a way that that is possible.
And I'm just going to express my concerns about the fire safety there. I know that you've shared and had conversations about how you can lock doors and prevent people from coming in, but not going out, probably similar to a public school, you know, just hearing locked doors and maximum capacities scares me, so. But in general, you know, again, I just wonder if this resolution would lead to just flipping the issue of the noise on one side of the building to the other side of the building. Whereas everyone leaving the south side, and I'm not trying to be problematic here, I'm just trying to weigh everything out here, if everyone leaves, and if you, you know, as you suggest, it's, that it is feasible to do this, if everyone moves from the south side to then go to the north side of the building, to wait in line, how calm, cool, and collected do you think those waiting, who have already had a few drinks, are going to be, waiting to get back in, while they're waiting in line?
I think those kids are waiting in line already.
Huh? Well, I know, well, that's another problem, those kids that are already waiting in line, and now you're exiting the back, and what, you know, what happens if I go into the establishment to get a drink or go to the bathroom right before 11:00 PM, and then my friends are outside, they're getting thrown out, but I'm inside?
Yeah, but we, you know, we can't make all those.
I know.
Provide for every scenario, there's just no way.
No, I know, I'm just trying to take into consideration how difficult this is logistically.
Well, I think we can have a show cause hearing two months from now if it doesn't work out, like, you can do that, you know, it's like, we can change it again, we don't have to make everything, you know.
No, I know, I understand that, but again, it's also my understanding that you don't need a show cause hearing, you can reconsider a liquor license at any point in time, is that correct? Mr. Craven?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Durkin referenced a show cause hearing possibly in two months' time, but it's my understanding that as the town council, we can take up and consider any liquor license at any point in time throughout the calendar year.
Absolutely. I mean, you're going to, you're going to grant an extension of this license, or renew of this license, but if something came about, we frequently hear about this in Providence. If something happens, there's a shooting at a bar, and the next thing, two days later, the, the town council or the liquor, liquor control administrator is having a hearing, so you can do that at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I, you know, I.
I'd like to make a motion that we end the public hearing. I think we have to do that before we vote, correct?
We do, but we do need to develop consensus before I put anything to a vote. That's been recommended by our solicitors.
Okay.
And seeing as that I don't get a consensus at the moment, I need to.
I agree with Jim and I agree with Ryan.
So can you elaborate, just so that I'm clear on this?
I think we should have music off outside at 10:00, all sound off outside at 10:00. I think we should close the outside.
Including TVs?
The sound of the TVs.
All sound, yeah, okay.
I think that we should close the patio at 11:30. And close. I think that we should close the patio at 11:30 and close the indoors at 1 AM.
All right. And sound off outside by 10:00 PM. Does that also include, what time, sorry, I'm just, patio at 11:30 and indoors at 1 AM? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And do the two of you or Ryan have, agree with that? Because I just want to make sure that there's a consensus amongst the majority. I don't, and again, I appreciate the dialogue here. I'm not going to support this respectfully because I don't think it gets to the root cause of the problem. But if the consensus has been built, and it seems like it has, I don't know if you have any other thing that you want to say before we move or anyone makes a motion?
If we find out over the course of a couple of months that this doesn't work, let's have it again. And we can workshop another solution to try and curb the issue.
So at 10 o'clock, the music goes off. The televisions go off. All noise, like, creating activity goes off.
On the outside.
On the outside.
But, so it's just the cornhole, for instance?
Yeah, the cornhole's done. That's done at 10, right? Well, you don't want the yelling, right? The yelling's the issue, right? It's like, so all, any activity that creates noise over reasonable levels should just be done, right? That's what we want to do. And then inside, at that same time, I guess, right? The windows get closed. And I didn't think about people coming from outside and then going back in, but you know what? You can't stop them from wanting to do that, but at least now they're. Right. And you can't say they can't have lines, but that just has to be organized by the, you know, the people that own the place. So I think, you know, we should just have a vote on it. We can keep going around and on, you know, but.
I just want to go on record that my concern is more so that, you know, we're saying that we can revisit this in a couple of months' time, but are we going to be treating a business like this and residents in the area where we're just constantly passing things down a couple of months at a time? And I just feel like a more permanent solution for the time being is, you know, just again, the recommendation that I made. But again, it sounds like there's a consensus that's been made here, so.
You know, Alex, the only, you know, I somewhat agree with you, but the only problem is, you know, once you go down, it'll be impossible to go back. You know, it just, I feel like this is the proper way to do it. The fairest way to everybody.
I'm all about respect and the way to do that, but I think that two years with the quality of life that Boone Street Market residents have shown and there not being an immediate solution, I think that this is the quickest fix, and that's why I wanted to propose it. I didn't know how, you know, the feedback was going to be. But, you know, I think a year's time is a lot of time for us to be able to think about solutions. And it's been a lot of headache for, you know, everyone in town, especially, you know, those directly impacted. So that's just why I shared this. And I don't want it to be every three months we're having a Boone Street Market liquor license renewal. I think that's not fair for anyone in this room, especially at 11:30 PM. You know, we're not here to make records or break our own records for the longest public hearing in this town. So, I mean, I think councillor, or former council president Jesse Pugh used to say that he had the longest meetings until we showed up. So, but again, that's just what I wanted to share. But again, I think the consensus has been built. So I leave the floor open to if anyone wants to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, on to the rest of the agenda because there's a lot of words that I still need to read at this time of night.
Did we have a vote?
Not yet, that's on the agenda. So.
Oh, I see.
On item C4. And, all right. Item C4, is there a motion to approve the renewal of the following Class B Victualling Alcohol Beverage License subject to all state and local regulations, Market at Gansett Rail LLC DBA Boone Street Market 145 Boone Street with the, hold on, with the additional restrictions that all sound outdoors will be turned off at 10:00 PM, and that's inclusive of music, TV, live entertainment. What am I missing?
Any activity that creates noise over reasonable levels. Any activity that creates noise over reasonable levels?
Sorry.
Council president?
Yes.
The current live music restriction's 9:00 PM. You said inclusive of live music. It already has its own restriction.
Oh, thank you, sorry about that. Yep, well, thank you. So approve the liquor license with the current outdoor live music will cease at 9:00 PM. All outdoor music, including any activity that creates noise over reasonable levels to be considered TVs, cornhole at 10:00 PM. All outdoor patio business will be shut off at 11:30 PM with windows closed at that time. And the business will remain open for indoor operations until 1 AM.
With the reduction of sound within the inside, bring the decimals down on the music, so it's not as loud.
Which I don't know how can we enforce that.
Oh, well, never mind.
I think we would, you know, maybe that'll come in with the noise ordinance that councillor Tori Alday and I look at. So, did you get that, Sarah? Would you like to reread what I just said?
I have it down, it's fine.
And everyone's got that, everyone knows what they're voting on? Okay.
So moved.
Thank you, I forgot what he's saying.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will oppose based on these restrictions. Motion passes 4-1.
Alex, could you please repeat the first and second for me on that one?
Councillor Coloney's moved the motion. Councillor Tori Alday seconded.
Thank you very much.
Item C5. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the following Class B Victualling Alcoholic Beverage Licensees 20 subject to compliance with all state and local regulations, 23 Pier Narragansett LLC DBA Agave Social Restaurant? And you're all going to be sick and tired of hearing me by the time I'm done with this. 23 Pier Marketplace, Champlin's Seafood Deck Inc. DBA, Champlin's Seafood Deck 256 Great Island Road, Diamond Arturo Core DBA Arturo Joe's 140 Point Judith Road B19, Georges of Galley Restaurant Inc. DBA, Georges of Galilee 250 Sand Hill Cove Road, GFL Inc. DBA Pancho O'Malley's 140 Point Judith Road Units 2021-22, Hammerhead Grill Inc. DBA Bonview Inn and 1230 Ocean Bistro, 11230 Ocean Road, Mariner Grill Inc. DBA, Mariner Grill 140 Point Judith Road Unit A7, New Dragon Inc. DBA, New Dragon 80 Point Judith Road, One Eye Jack's LLC DBA Buster Crabs, Beach Bar and Burger Shack 265 Great Island Road, Pelly's Properties LLC DBA, Pelly's Place 909 Boston Neck Road Number 3, Portside Restaurant Inc., Portside Restaurant 321 Great Island Road, Ralph Jagshitz DBA, The Tavern 140 Point Judith Road Unit A5, Sags Enterprises LLC DBA, PJ's Pub 135 Boone Street, South Winds Corporation DBA, Coast Guard House 40 Ocean Road, Spain of Narragansett Inc. DBA, Spain Restaurant 1144 Ocean Road, The Bike Stop Cafe Inc., The Bike Stop Cafe 145 Boone Street, TRG 2 Inc. DBA, Teas Narragansett 91 Point Judith Road, Trio LLC DBA, Celeste 15 Kingstown Road, Tsunami Asian and Sushi Bar LLC DBA, Tsunami Asian Bar and Sushi Bar 21 Pier Marketplace, Twin Willows Inc. DBA, Twin Willows 865 Boston Neck Road. So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Tori Alday, seconded by councillor Coloney's. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Hey, Alex.
Yeah?
Are we out of the public hearing?
Yes.
So.
What was your question?
Are we out of the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, we closed it.
Maybe a silly question, but.
She puts all the approvals in the transcript.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Good question. Item C6. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the following Class B Victualling Limited Alcoholic Beverage Licensees 4 subject to compliance with all state and local regulations, Aunt Carrie's Inc. DBA, Aunt Carrie's 1240 Ocean Road, Julio's LLC DBA, Leo's Pizza 909 Boston Neck Road, Monahan's Restaurant Inc. DBA, Monahan's Clam Shack 190 Ocean Road, Ocean State Pickleball LLC DBA, Ocean State Pickleball Club 360 South Pier Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to item C7. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the following Class B Tavern Alcoholic Beverage Licensees 3 subject to compliance with all state and local regulations, IMP Beverage Services DBA Shorehouse and Seacraft 113 Ocean Road, The Break LLC DBA, The Break Hotel and Share 5 1208 Ocean Road, The Surf Shack Bed and Breakfast LLC DBA, The Surf Shack Bed and Breakfast 83 Narragansett Ave.
So moved.
Second.
Abstained.
Yep, almost there. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention by councillor Durkin. Item C8. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the following Class D Club Alcoholic Beverage Licensees 6 subject to compliance with all state and local regulations, Bonnet Shores Beach Club Association DBA, Bonnet Shores Beach Club 175 Bonnet Point Road, Dunes Corporation DBA, The Dunes Club 137 Boston Neck Road, GBC Association DBA, Galilee Beach Club 220 Sand Hill Cove Road, Metatuxa Improvement Association DBA, Metatuxa Yacht Club 30 South River Drive, Pettaquamskut Lake Shore Improvement Association DBA, Pettaquamskut Lake Shores 50 Woodsea Trail, Point Judith Country Club DBA, Point Judith Country Club 150 Windmere Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Last item of the evening, is there, item C9. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the following Class A Alcoholic Beverage Licensees 4 subject to compliance with all state and local regulations, Bonnet Spirits Inc. DBA Bonnet Liquors 965 Boston Neck Road, Pier Liquors DBA, Pier Liquors 29 Pier Marketplace, Schwab's Wine and Spirits Inc. DBA, Schwab's Wine and Spirits 855 Point Judith Road, O'Neill's Package Store Inc. DBA, O'Neill's Package Store 366 South Pier Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Is there a motion to adjourn at
So.
11:43?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Have a great night.